You know, no respect.
Say he's ready?
What?
Did he say he's ready?
He said thank you.
Oh, he said thank you.
Okay. I don't see us up there, though. Try it again there, see if he's... That's what he's... Ready, ready. Because I don't see us up there.
Okay.
What's that?
They asked that these doors stay open, but they're closing the outer doors and they're pushing people out.
Yeah. Why won't they close that one? We can close that one, right?
No, they wanted... They said they want these doors open.
Oh.
Otherwise, they banged.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the fifteenth of June, 2023 City and Nashua Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Scott LaClare.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Alderman Cleed, Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum here. I'm gonna move on with the agenda. So first up on the agenda, we have minutes from the... Looks like I have June 1st, 2023, minutes in our packet. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at those minutes and wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need any amendments?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 1st, 2023 City and Nashua Planning Board meeting as written.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve the June 1st, 2023 minutes as written. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes. Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay, one abstention. Thanks. Okay, next up, communications.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The following items were emailed to you earlier today, and they're also in your packet as well. There's a revised staff report for the subdivision for Temple Street, as well as two revised staff reports for both of those projects, the site plans. You also should have received updated engineering comments dated June 7th. And finally, a copy of an easement deed regarding other business number three, an easement to Penet Check Water Works. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any reports from committees or liaisons?
None.
Okay. All right, next up, I'm gonna read the procedure of the meeting here. So the way this is gonna go after each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision is read by myself. The board is first gonna determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, a public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll next ask for testimony from the audience. I'll first ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan. If you desire, please come forward to the microphone, state your name, address for the record, and this will be your time to express any concerns or ask any questions you have regarding the plan. I'll next ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant, and then the applicant will be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll speak to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this is completing, the public hearing will end. The board will resume a public meeting, and at that time, we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that everybody keep their remarks to the subject at hand, not repeat what has been already been said by others. The board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on our testimony, based on the testimony presented and considering all our approval criteria established in our Nashua revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I'd ask everybody for their interest and their attention, and if you do have a cellphone, please go ahead and put it on vibrate or turn it off at this time. So, thanks, everybody. So next up, I'm gonna move on with the agenda. I'm gonna be taking this, these particular items in a certain order that I feel like is the most efficient for the meeting. So I'm gonna start up with old business conditional special use permits. There are none. The first thing that I'm gonna hear is a new business subdivision plan. This is case number 823-0096, G Mac Properties LLC owner. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed one-year extension of a proposed 29-unit multifamily townhouse subdivision with associated condominium documents. This property is located at 4, 6, and 8 Domain Avenue. So for the board, does anybody have a chance to take a look at this subdivision application? Wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business case 823-0096, property located at 4, 6, and 8 Domain Avenue.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board on jurisdiction? All those in favor of jurisdiction?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. We have jurisdiction. Do we have somebody from the applicant from this case 823-0096 who wants to present? Come on up.
Hello, Nathan Chamberlain with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Yes, we're looking to extend this for... It was already approved for one year. The applicant's been working on this, this project on the opposite side of the street, which is wrapping... You know, he's just got AG approval, and he's starting to market it, and once those start going, are sold, he'll move into this project. He's anticipating to get going on this project in the next month or two.
Okay. No changes to the plans?
No.
No, or subdivision? Current stipulations as written in the staff report, you've read them, and you're accepting of those?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions by the board for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open it up to public testimony regarding this particular application. Does anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question regarding this plan? Okay, anybody wishing to speak in favor? I don't know if we have anybody on Zoom with any hands up?
I do not see any hands up.
Okay. All right, I'll give the board one last opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff who are in the hearing. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing on this, move into the meeting. Okay, it seems like a pretty straightforward extension of something that we've approved before. No changes to the plan, no changes to the stipulations. Any comments by the board or any discussion? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business case 823-0096, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plan NRO, Section 190-146D, subject to two conditions as stipulated in the staff report.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve 823-0096, the subdivision one-year extension with the two staff recommended stipulations. Do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, next up on the agenda, or that I'm gonna take on the agenda, is other business. This is item number two. This is a referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed petition. This is for Eldierwood Drive, Lot H, Sheet 103. This is a referral that was tabled from our June 15th, 2023 meeting. So I guess for the board, I would ask, does anybody wanna make a motion regarding taking this off the table prior to requesting the applicant present? Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take the case off the table.
All right, so we have that motion to take it off the table. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor are taking it off the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Do we have somebody here that wants to present this referral? Thanks.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Daniel Muller from Cronin, Bissin, and Zalinski on behalf of the owner, Vivian Jean Adams. We are here because by statute, when you file a petition with the Board of Mayor and Alderman under 67441, it has to be referred to the planning board for comment, and that is what we're here for tonight. I've been asked to give a little bit of background, so the board is aware. Ms. Adams owns a approximately 3.25-acre parcel on what is now Deerwood Drive. It used to be known as Blood's Crossing Road. It's been determined to be Class 6. She, back in September of 202021, obtained a frontage variance from the zoning board of adjustment to allow for construction, but because we are also... Our frontage is on a Class 6, we need relief under 67441. This particular parcel is really the only parcel in the area that is likely to be developed. As I indicated, it's 3.25 acres. Most of the land around it is either wet or in conservation, and tends to be larger lots. If you go further north on Deerwood Drive, above what is called North Fork of Blood's Crossing Road, that section of Deerwood Drive was discontinued by the city a while back, and therefore, no longer has any status. So this lot is really the only one that can be developed in the area. Obviously, the board has seen comments from the various departments. We had gotten one round of comments from the fire marshal prior to seeking a variance and agreed we abide by those comments. Likewise, we have gotten more from Public Works and the Fire Department, and we will abide by those. Some of those comments are somewhat dependent upon what is actually built there, more specifically, if the person who ultimately builds on this property, which has been owned by Ms. Adams since 2002, which she's been carrying the cost of since that point in time, comes in, puts sprinklers in whatever house they construct. The specific requirements may vary, as opposed to whether, if they chose not to put sprinklers in the house. So some of the specific conditions or comments that would apply would have to wait to the time that someone comes in and actually with plans for the house. At this point in time, we're simply looking for the ability through the Board of Mayor and Alderman for a building permit to be able to be issued for this property. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks. Any questions by the board on this particular petition? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, just perhaps I might direct a question to Mr. Hudson. I think there were some comments raised on June 1 about possibly this being premature, and I didn't know if engineering has had significant or substantial time to review this and determine if this is now the time to act on this, or if this is still something that should possibly be delayed.
Sure, so I can speak to that. We, engineering, I think, issued comments back in January. We hadn't heard anything about this since. The, the plan that we've received needs work, but, you know, that's kinda sec... Can be secondary to an approval to build. It would just, that, that comes with certain requirements, as was noted, and it kinda depends what they're gonna build, that sort of thing. I think what I'm... I think the issue I raised was a question about, is this premature and scattered development, which is really a planning question and a question for the board. So that's... Hey, any other questions about that? Does that answer your question?
I think it does. Thank you.
Any other questions by the board for the applicant? Ms. Hudson?
Yeah, I was just curious, have... What, how far out the Class 6 road is the proposed house or whatever, or the lot, I guess?
To tell you the truth, I would have to look that up. You, they would have to come off Massa Sawyer, the end of that, and go up. It is the only one... I'm sorry, I don't have a number. I'm trying to see if...
It's approximately 585 feet.
Okay, thank you. That would sound about right.
Sorry, did you say, did you say 500?
585.
Okay. Other questions by the board? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll open up to the public. Is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to this particular... Come on up.
Thank you. My name is Sherry Dutzy. I'm on the Nashua Conservation Commission. I was not prepared to speak to this tonight because I didn't see that it was on the agenda. That was my fault. If this, if we're talking about the land on Deerwood Drive, that is basically completely surrounded by conservation land that was conserved, I believe, in 2002, 2005, to protect the watershed. Also, I think on the other side is the airport. Has anybody on this committee viewed that piece of property? Because the Conservation Commission walks that area every year as part of our monitoring process for the L-Chip money that we received for it. And I guess I have, I guess I have a lot of questions, because the street that dead ends there, okay? So that street is going to have to be... A street is actually going to have to be conserved, preserved, developed, I assume, at the city expense. And then the, the, what is it? The Level 6 road that you're talking about is basically a trail that we walk right now. At the head of the trail begins the conservation land, and I understand where that parcel is, but it's pretty far down. And, you know, a, a Level 6 road, is that just going to be maintained as a dirt road, and there's going to be a house at the end of the dirt road? I, I guess my question would be, how much of a commitment does the city have to make to be creating and paving a road to get a house in an isolated area that's surrounded by conservation land? And has this land been looked at for wetlands, because the area around there is quite wet? So, you know, I was aware of this, I think, coming before one of the boards about a year ago. I believe this was also a parcel of land that was offered to the Conservation Commission at what we consider to be a price that we would not wish to pay for that land. So I would just ask this board that before any decisions are made, or before you go forward in any way, that we research it a little bit more to, A, know what the cost is gonna be to the city, and know if there's any wetlands in that area that, that the land can even be developed. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yep. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question in this petition? Okay. So I guess I'll ask the applicant, come on up. I don't know, Ms. Hudson might have some input on it as well. It looks like there's a couple of questions hanging out there. They'd be helpful for us to understand if you have an understanding of the developmental road, city's piece of that, and what the wetlands.
I will address the maintenance issue first, because that one is crystal clear. One of the things that you have to do, a Class 6 road is technically a public highway. This one was laid out in, I believe, 1807. However, it's one that the city does not have a duty to maintain. It achieved that status most commonly because for a period of five successive years, it was not maintained by the city, and it therefore reverts to what they call Class 6 highway by statute. In addition, under 67441, and this document will be, has to be approved by your legal counsel. We've already had, I've already had some discussions with Ms. Leonard. As a precondition to getting a building permit, I have to file in the Registry of Deeds a notice of limit on municipal responsibility and liability, which basically says that the person who is getting the approval to do this has to maintain the road. The city has no responsibility. That goes into the Registry of Deeds, and absent a change in the status of the road, that remains the rule. It remains the responsibility of the owner to make sure that the way is passable. In this particular case, I know that the Fire Department, under the Fire Code, requires at least 20 feet in width for a travelway for emergency vehicles, and it has to be sufficiently durable to surface, be it asphalt or something else, in order to support emergency vehicle apparatus. That's one of their requirements, and that's one of the things we have to live by. But this is not something that is a cost to the city. Again, the very document that we have to file before we get any building permit says that this is the, the maintenance and liability lie with the owner, and they essentially waive any liability, for example, if a fire truck can't get up there in time. That's what the document is gonna state. It's been partially drafted and partially agreed to, but at the end of the day, I think that's my response to that particular part of the question.
Okay. Do you have an understanding of the wetland impacts on the, I guess?
I haven't been made aware that there were any wetlands issues on this particular lot. Wetlands, in terms of, generally speaking, from a development standpoint, wetlands usually come up when you go to build, because there's usually a wetland setback. You have to be so many feet. As a matter of public policy, the city says you have to be so many feet from wetlands, and in some cases, poorly drained soils. It depends on the particular ordinance. So when you go to build, right now, all we're looking to do is to have this lot be so that you can potentially get a building permit. We're not looking for a specific approval for a specific project yet, but I do believe at that point in time, if you did go get a building permit, or we're looking to get a building permit, you're gonna want verification on the city's side that there is not gonna be built within so many feet of wetlands. As I said, I do know that the, from the GIS, it shows a lot of the surrounding area. I do not believe the GIS showed any wetlands on this particular property. But again, I think that's an issue that would necessarily, to the extent there is a concern, would have to be addressed when you would get a permit for a particular project.
Okay. Mr. Barley?
Just to follow up on that, understanding that, you know, this, first of all, putting in the context, what the board is doing here is just, we're providing recommendations, not approval. Understanding that you would ultimately need approval from the Board of Alderman as a prerequisite to a building permit. It is simply, it sounds like, one condition to receiving ultimately a building permit. And can you just speak to, is, I, I gather that there's no additional planning board, that this, you know, this wouldn't require subdivision review, for example?
No, this is a lot of record. It's a 3.25-acre lot. There's no subdivision involved. So I know I heard the notion of scattered and premature development, which is sort of a notion that comes up in the context of subdivision. We're looking for an ability to get a permit for a lot of record. So no, this would not come back. We, my understanding, single family, so would be outside the board's site plan purview. So it, this, I, I don't see how it would come back to the board. I'll put it that way. Unless there was, down the road, something odd that required a special permit or a conditional use permit that was in the board's jurisdiction, but nothing like that's contemplated right now. So we would just go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for approval.
All right. Other questions by the board for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ballinger?
Question for staff. Administratively, given the fact that there is conservation area abutting this property, you're, forget the wetlands specifically, but does the Conservation Commission get a proverbial bite at the apple first, or would that come if there is actually a site plan put forward?
In terms of purchasing the property?
Well, in terms of just procedurally moving forward, obviously, we understand, I think, the planning board either makes a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, but procedurally, because it abuts conservation land, it would appear, is there, is, does the Conservation Commission, are they part of this process at this, at this juncture?
No, this process is laid out in state statute, and there is no provision in that statute for the Conservation Commission review.
Very good. Thank you.
Any more? Ms. Hudson?
The only caveat I would give to that is that as part of the required driveway plan that, that we'll be asking for to review, it'll be required to delineate wetlands along the route, and should there be wetland impacts, and that would require a state permit, and the Conservation Commission is usually copied on those applications, it has an opportunity to comment. So, you know, if there were no wetland, wetland impacts, or no wetlands found, I think, I think Mr. Durfee is correct, but if there are wetlands that are gonna be impacted, I think they would have an opportunity to consult.
Any other questions by the board? Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So as Mr. Ballinger stated, the board's role in this is really just a recommendation regarding the referral to the Board of Alderman, either a positive or negative recommendation, and any comments we wanna pass along, so... Anybody have any thoughts, wanna make a motion? Mr. Barley?
I'd be willing to make a motion, but I'll hold off on that unless, you know, to see if anybody else has any comments beforehand.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I am concerned about the conservation piece of this. I mean, if you're saying our role is, is not really to, to base our opinion on that, and we're just putting it to the Board of Alderman in that point, it could still go to the Conservation Commission. I'm just worried about the conservation land, and I just wanna make sure that I'm, it, my vote tonight is, is gonna go for, I, I still want the Conservation Commission at some point involved in this to make sure that it is doing, we are doing the right thing there. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I mean, we can put a, you know, attach to our recommendation that the Board of Alderman communicate or involve the country... I mean, it's up to, it's up to the Board of Alderman, right, to, to do that? But if we feel like as a board, that's an important aspect, we can tag that comment onto our referral.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess the only thing I would say about this is, is the attorney for the applicant said, I mean, this is a lot of record. There's no site plan, there's no subdivision. So, you know, that's typically the context in which you would have, you know, a Conservation Commission review. I presume that at some point, there was a subdivision plan that was approved that created this lot, and you would have had, I don't know how long ago that, that occurred, but in theory, at least, there would have been Conservation Commission review at that time. I mean, I think maybe what I would suggest is we say that, you know, we ask that the Board of Alderman, you know... we ask that the Board of Alderman, you know, in considering this, take into account, you know, the proximity of the lot to the, the conservation land, you know, and consider that in relation to, you know, ultimately approval of a building permit.
Yeah, makes sense to me. Okay, any other discussion by the board? Want to make that motion? Mr. Varley?
Yes, so I, I would make a motion to provide a favorable recommendation with respect to the petition for L. Deerwood Drive, Lot H, Sheet one oh three, to the Board of Alderman with the, the further recommendation or comment to the Board of Alderman that in further reviewing and considering approval of this petition, that they take into account the proximity of the lot to the existing conservation land and any potential impacts that the, that ultimate building on that lot could have on that conservation land.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley for the positive referral as stated. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thank you. Next up, I'm going to take the second referral from the Board of Alderman. This is on a proposed amended resolution, R. twenty-three dash one twenty-three, authorizing the granting of an easement to Penachuk Water Works for the construction and maintenance of a water line. Again, this was tabled from June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Anybody from the board want to make a motion to pull this off the table? And get some presentation on this by somebody? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, I, I would make a motion to re, to remove other business, item three, consideration of resolution R. dash twenty-three dash one twenty-three from the table.
All right, so you have that motion to take this referral off the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Mr. Pearlman, you want to present on this?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney with Prunian and Pearlman here in Nashua. I'm representing Rasenin Homes Elite Limited Liability Company. And just to give the board just a very brief history, the board will, Rasenin Homes Elite purchased this property for the Bella Estates project on Bartlett Ave. in March of two thousand twenty-two. In August of two thousand twenty-two, in February of this year, we went through the subdivision process to create twenty-two new lots. Now, at the time of purchase, and at the time we're going through the permitting process with you folks, we knew we had water pressure issues at the end of Bartlett, but we didn't know how severe those water pressures are and how much lack of water pressure there is at the end of Bartlett, at the intersection of Bartlett and Wellington. So as a result, earlier this year, we began talking with Penachuk about how to solve this solution. And Penachuk came back to us and said, well, the best solution for this project is to take a water line off the high-pressure water line on, on the east side of Manchester Street, run it through Greeley Park to get to the project at the end of Bartlett. The benefit of doing that obviously provides water to the Rasenin project and the twenty-two lots. It provides the hydrant pressure that we need for the new project. But the real upside is that in doing, in running the water line through our project and down to the intersection of Bartlett and Wellington, Penachuk will then pick up from there, and forty-plus homes in this part of Nash will, will have their water pressure doubled. Apparently, there's very low water pressure, roughly eighteen PSI water pressure in, on Bartlett, Wellington, Columbia, and a couple of the other streets, Elliott. And by going through this process, the benefit of running the water line from the high-pressure water line in Manchester Street through the Rasenin Project to Bartlett is that forty-plus homes will have their water pressure approximately doubled. We initially proposed a water line to run through the field on Manchester Street at Greeley Park, where the disc golf course is played, because we thought that would have the least impact on mature trees as we make our way up the hill toward the Rasenin property. Ms. Fatow and Mr. Hudson, we're concerned about the visibility of the tree cuts, excuse me, from the folks on Manchester Street. Looking across the field, they would see some cut of some trees back there. And so we had a good sidewalk on May twenty-third, where collectively, the city, Rasenin and Penachuk all agreed that we would run the water line where it is currently proposed in this plan. Can you back that plan out a little bit, please? And you can see that the agreed route for the water line, I can't quite see it yet, but it runs along that, there we go. It runs along the, I can't quite see it. But it runs along the existing Greeley Park Road. And it runs to the north of it. It's going to cut through the road and then tie into the, tie into the Rasenin property. Rasenin is to install the water line. The city has agreed to pave that portion that gets impacted of that Greeley Park Road. And then Penachuk again takes over to, to upgrade the water lines in Bartlett and Elliott and Wellington in this area. The easement that we, you have before you is a quick claim conveyance from the city to Penachuk Water Works. It is, the easement has been approved by Attorney Leonard and Penachuk as well. And, Mr. Chairman, we are looking for a positive recommendation back to the Board of Alderman. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody from the board have any questions on this easement? Ms. Hudson?
No questions, Mr. Chair. It's kind of a statement. I just wanted to share that we appreciate the willingness of the applicant to revise the layout of the water line. They have done that as, as was testified to. And we're, Public Works and others are supportive of this revised route. So again, thank you to them for being willing to work with us and make that modification.
Okay. That's all I have. All right. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this particular request for easement?
Hi, Alderman Patricia Lee, Nine Maywood Drive, Ward Three. I'm also the chair of the Penachuk Special Water Committee. And through Mr. Hudson, Mr. Rasenin, Mr. Pearlman, and so on, I just want to reiterate that we did do that walkthrough. And it changes the impact from what the original plan was of almost twenty-seven hundred square foot of impact onto Greeley to only, I think it's like six hundred and, less than six hundred and fifty impact on it. So it's a much better way. It goes down the road, as he referred to as North Road. I always call it the Fire Road, that's across from Beauview. It, it truly is a better plan than what it would have been. And as had been spoken before, from Manchester Street, you would have been able to see the new, the new builds, the new homes that were there. Now, you'll still have trees. And the reason why is that property will probably, I think it's maybe about eight acres of trees that will be removed. And what a lot of people don't realize is how close that property is to the disc golf. So this is truly the best compromise. I appreciate them coming to the table and willingly do this. So I do want to make one other clarification. As an Alderman, I've gotten a lot of emails, or I should say phone calls as well, that people were very upset thinking that we were building a road to that property and that this was going to be a cutthroat road to Bartlett. I want to make that very clear. This is not going to be a drive-through road. It will still be an emergency road that will be put through there. It'll be nothing different than what, what it'll be. It's just currently, that's the, the way it would be. So it's, the, Penachuk already has a blanket easement there. So something would have been put there anyways. This is the best compromise, and I appreciate everybody coming to the table and doing that. So thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to provide comment on this? Okay. For the board, discussion on this matter? Questions?
I mean, it seems like everyone's agreed that this, this is the best layout. And that, you know, that the applicant has come forward and, and worked with the city to,
I can't hear you.
to come to that arrangement. So given that everyone seems to be agreeing on that, I'm certainly supportive of making a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Any other comments by the board? Discussion? All right. Want to make that motion? Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion for a favorable recommendation of resolution R. dash two-three dash one-two-three, authorizing the granting of an easement to Penachuk Water Works for the construction and maintenance of a water line.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger for the positive recommendation for R. twenty-three dash one twenty-three. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on with our agenda. So the, the last item we have on our agenda for tonight, and I'm sure what most people are here for, is, is a old business set of cases here. And I'm just going to summarize these first. We have old business subdivision plan. This is case number A twenty-one dash zero-two-nine-nine. This is one forty-five Temple Street LLC owner, Green Ridge LLC applicant. This is a proposed three-lot subdivision for a property located in one forty-five through one forty-nine Temple Street. That particular item was tabled from May fourth. And associated with that particular owner and applicant, we have old business site plan. This is case number A twenty-one dash zero-three-hundred. Same owner and applicant. This is a proposed site plan to show a four-bay garage, office, and storage. Property is located at one forty-five through one forty-nine Temple Street, again, tabled from May fourth, twenty twenty-three. And case, an old business site plan, A twenty-one dash zero-three-zero-one. This is one forty-five Temple Street, again, same owner, same applicant. A proposed site plan to add asphalt manufacturing, this property, again, at one forty-five through one forty-nine Temple Street. This is, again, tabled from May fourth, twenty twenty-three. So regarding these three particular applications, again, as I mentioned, they all were tabled back on May fourth of twenty twenty-three. Just to summarize for everybody, the board and public that's here, we essentially have taken a couple of presentations by the applicant, at least a couple, two to three. We've taken two public testimonies of multiple hours. We have received new information from the applicant, for which I'm gonna, the way it's going to work tonight is if we do take jurisdiction of these, which is our first order of business, I'm going to have the applicant present the new information that they've presented over the, since the May fourth, to the board. The board will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant of this new information. At that point, I am going to open for public testimony. It's going to be forty-five minutes maximum. We've had multiple hours already of public testimony, as well as hundreds of pieces of information sent in to the board more than a week ago. So we've had ample time to review what's been sent in to us. So I'll take that public testimony, should anybody want it. And then the applicant will be given a rebuttal period after that time to respond to that new testimony and any questions they may have. I remind public that may decide to come up during any of the public testimony. The intent here is to receive comment on the new information, not to receive the same comments we received the last two times around. So we're looking for a new comment on the new information. And at that point, you know, the board will move into, you know, a public meeting. So be it, if we decide, so. So that's kind of the lay of the land and how this is going to work tonight. There'll be some points as well when staff is probably going to be asked to provide some comments during the hearing as well. But anyway, that's, that's how the agenda is going to work. So for the board, I'm going to first ask regarding, and I'm going to, I'd like to take these as a bucket of, of applications. Again, A twenty-one dash zero-two-nine-nine, zero-three-hundred, and zero-three-zero-one. Has anybody had a chance to look at the new information that's been presented and want to make a motion as to whether we want to take this off the table and reopen the hearing? For the board, Mr. Varley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As to cases A twenty-one zero-two-nine-nine, A twenty-one dash zero-three-zero-zero, and A twenty-one dash zero-three-zero-one, I would make a motion that we remove all three cases from the table and reopen the public hearing.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley to open these three applications, take them off the table. Does anybody on the board want to make a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board on jurisdiction, taking them off the table? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, so we have these three applications back off the table. And I would ask the applicant to come on up and, again, focus on presenting sort of the new information. We don't, we, we don't need a summary of kind of where we've been. Pretty familiar with it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney with Prunian and Pearlman here in Nashua, here on behalf of one forty-five Temple Street Limited Liability Company and Green Ridge Limited Liability Company. With us tonight is our full team, the DeFelice family, owners of the property and the proponent of the project. Planning, project engineer Richard Maynard, traffic engineer Jason Plord is here. Co-counsel Tom Hildreth from the McLean office is here as well. And Dr. Green is with us by Zoom. And again, Mr. Chairman, we are open to any questions at any time. My initial comments, Mr. Chairman, will be brief. But then I will come back and provide comments for what was submitted from those in opposition and summarize our presentation. Since we were last here, Mr. Chairman, we have had two formal submittals and then some follow-up submittals as a result of questions that were received from Mr. Husband, Mr. Mandola. And I can walk you through that. The first thing that we submitted following our last hearing was submitted on May first of this year. And that was two reports. One report was from Doctors Crouch and Green from Green Technology Limited Liability Company. And in that report, and Dr. Green can speak to this if she would like, in that report, Dr. Green summarized her prior testimony and provided additional evidence to the board. The board will recall that there were some questions about diesel exhaust fumes. Dr. Green spoke to that. There was back and forth with the Sanborn Head letter of April fourth, and we addressed that issue with Dr. Green's letter. And I just generally have to say, I, I believe it's fair to say that Doctors Green and Dr. Zemba from Sanborn Head are largely on the same page of the toxicology and the dispersion issues that have been presented with this, with this application. And again, the board, if there's any questions for Dr. Green, we can, we can speak to that. Secondly, there were outstanding questions from Traffic, from Mr. Husband. And Jason Plord submitted his report dated April third that was, that was supplied with our May one transmittal, addressing any outstanding concerns at that time that Mr. Husband had. And again, Jason is here and he can speak to any issues like that. And again, we talked to truck idling factors and truck start emission factors. We were trying to address any questions that came up during our presentations, came up from the board. Secondly, we submitted on May twenty-sixth, co-counsel John Weaver from the McLean office provided a cover letter, a cover letter to the, the submittal on May twenty-sixth that covered a lot of information that we've been talking about and that we've been, that we've presented with respect to site plan review. In addition, Attorney Weaver provided the board with a compliance chart where we went through every criteria of, of, of the site plan approval criteria, the transit overlay criteria. And just one by one, we went through each and every component of the ordinances and addressed how we meet or exceed each and every component of the ordinances. And again, I'll come back to this when I do a bit of a summary toward the end. And finally, Mr. Chairman, just for our initial comment, following those submittals, there were additional questions coming from were additional questions coming from Mr. Mandola and Mr. Husband. Letter dated June 7th. Project Engineer Richard Maynard answered a number of questions, and we're going to have updated plans to include such things as contours on the plan and things like that. And so anything that city staff has sent our way, we have answered. And again, we'd be happy to answer any questions for the board at this time, but I'll come back to kind of wrap things up.
Okay. So at this point, I'm going to open up to the board, asking any questions the applicant and material. Questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. Mr. Varley?
This is really to you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, I think the proposal...
Speak up, please.
I think there was a suggestion that the applicant would respond to the comments, and I would just suggest that, and I think this is what we discussed, that we would hear from the public testimony first and then have a consolidated rebuttal from the applicant.
Correct, yeah. I don't want to do two rebuttals.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yep, that's what we want to do.
Okay. All right, so if there aren't any questions, Ms. Hudson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the responses from Maynard and Paul Cad was that revised plans were going to be sent out shortly. That was on June 9th. We haven't received those to date, so I was just curious if I missed something.
You did not miss anything. They're due back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions by the board at this time? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it's... I'm going to go ahead then. At this point, I'm going to open up to public testimony. So if anybody in the audience wishes to speak in opposition or concern, come on up. Just kind of line up on that right-hand wall over there. Reminder, when you come up, name an address for record. You know, I've got a time limit here. Hopefully, we won't even use it all, but you never know. And try to keep your questions, comments to the new information that's been presented. Okay?
You're with me here, I only have one more to put up. Okay, thank you for the patience. I didn't expect to be here injured, but had an epic jump at the bike park up at Highland over Memorial Day weekend, and here we are with the broken collarbone. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Amy Manzelli from BCM. You should have their recent letter that we submitted, so I'm just going to jump right in on a few points. The first thing I need to do is what us lawyers call rehabilitating the witness. And in particular, I'm talking about Dr. Durant's testimony on April 6th. And I do want to take a couple of minutes. This is really the big point that I'm going to cover tonight. Everything else is going to be pretty quick, because it's important that the planning board know that Dr. Durant knows his stuff, and he read the application before he prepared his comments and his materials that he submitted to the board. And I want to look at Dr. Durant's materials, which I normally would be waving around, but with the one hand, I went for the pinup here. And you've got these in your materials. So Dr. Durant's materials are the two on the top left. They are visual in nature. Now, of course, there's numerical data that underlie how he created these visuals. But it's very easy for the board to look at these visuals and see exactly what areas would be predominantly affected by the pollution based on prevailing wind. Dr. Durant came and he told you he prepared these materials because when he reviewed the application materials, he saw that the applicant had not presented this data in visual form. He never said the applicant did not present this data. He never said that. Now, Dr. Green testified later that evening, and she did say some nice things about Dr. Durant, and we're appreciative of that. But she also said that Dr. Durant must not have had time to read the application. He must not have read the whole thing. Otherwise, he would have known that she presented the data. And that is just not true. He did know she presented the data. She went on to explain that she presented the data in spreadsheet form, and that she obviously knows the direction of the wind. Now, let's look at Dr. Durant's materials on this data. It's so big, it's not going to stay up there. And you can hear it's 14 pages, and I printed it on the big page, so you can see it's got a lot of numbers on it, and every page looks like this first page, though I'm not going to belabor the point and flip through it. Now, I looked at this with three PhDs, and we think, but we're not sure, that this is the same data plotting out the prevailing wind and where the pollution will flow across the neighborhoods from this plant. The reason I say we think is because it is not clear. This data is incredibly difficult to interpret. The spreadsheet refers to and relies on information that is housed on a private location outside of the planning board's record, in which in some cases requires specialized software to access. And we have found that most of the applicant's underlying technical data, it seems designed to be difficult to interpret. Why would you provide a spreadsheet like this when you could provide a visual format like that? When with one glance, you could communicate to the board exactly the impact on the community? And that was the entire point of Dr. Durant's preparation of this visual. Doesn't matter if Dr. Green knows the direction of the wind. It's not about her. It's also not about Dr. Durant. The point is to put the planning board to have in its record, in your record, for your benefit, evidence about the impacts of this project to the adjacent community in a way that you can readily understand. That's what we were going for. That's what we were trying to accomplish. We know Dr. Green put in the underlying data. We wanted to put it in in a way that was readily consumable. And I will pass over to staff, just in case there's any remaining question about our experts' credentials. I did bring their CVs, so that you would have that in your record. All right, three more points. I wanted to point out tonight that your record has some really important, uncontroverted expert testimony. The proposed plan will be developed in an environmentally and socioeconomically disadvantaged area, where Nashua residents already experience some of the most adverse, greater than 90th percentile environmental conditions in New Hampshire. And the applicant has not provided any evidence to refute these pre-existing conditions. And with respect to the pre-existing socioeconomic disadvantage in this area, and Imagine Nashua's vision to improve these existing situations, the applicant has completely ignored Imagine Nashua. Having uncontradicted expert testimony in favor of denial puts the planning board in a very strong, defensible position to deny this application in case there is an appeal of a denial. Number three, very briefly, I wanted to point out that we went ahead and did the alternative. We provided you a non-compliance chart in our letter, and I would urge you to have that handy when you get to your deliberations. Finally, I just want to conclude my remarks. In our overall position in this case, as I understand and hope that the planning board will be bringing this to a conclusion tonight, the applicant has had plenty of opportunity to build a record that would support an approval, but it hasn't done so. Rather, the planning board's record contains ample, credible evidence to support voting to deny. On behalf of my client, Riverfront Landing, and everyone else here that opposes this application, I urge the planning board to vote to deny this application. I thank you, all of the board members, for your time and attention to this difficult application and for listening to my client's concerns. A hot mix asphalt plant is the wrong welcome for the Gate City. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good evening. My name is John Neso, and I'm a Nashua resident, and I'm speaking in opposition to the plant. And for me, it's hard to believe that we're still entertaining this idea of allowing in a populated area, an asphalt-producing plant where trucks are going to go in and out of streets, you've heard it all, for a year now. Three or four meetings I've attended, some by Zoom. Are we... Are they trying to wait us out until nobody cares anymore? I don't know. Now, you've probably heard some of these facts. I won't belabor them, but we can argue about the wind blowing, we can argue about smells, but experts, experts have determined that the making of asphalt is dangerous to the surrounding environment. So why are we doing this in this area? Why? Why are we entertaining this? I don't understand it. An asphalt-producing plant would spew dangerous chemicals through our downtown, contaminating our homes, contaminating our businesses, our schools and places of worship. Toxic substances, including several carcinogens, are released from asphalt-producing facilities with known negative effects on human health. I don't hear any of these things addressed. I see a little erasures on a plan. I go through the PDFs online, and I see little things change. We're going to add a door. None of the issues have been addressed. I mean, do you agree? Nothing has been said. Let me describe two of the chemicals, because I haven't heard enough about them. I won't go on to the list, because there's dozens. There's dozens producing this material. Hydrogen sulfide is a poisonous, colorless gas associated with the characteristic smell of rotten eggs. People who live near an industrial facility that emits hydrogen sulfide may be exposed. An exposure to lower concentrations of hydrogen sulfide can result in less severe neurological and respiratory effects such as incoordination, loss of smell, nasal symptoms, sore throat, cough, dryness. We have little children in the area. We have a school in the area. Is this what we want to bring to Nashua? One more chemical, benzene. Benzene is a colorless liquid with a sweet odor. The Department of Health and Human Services, the International Agency for Cancer Research, and the EPA have all determined that benzene causes cancer. So what are we talking about? Why are we still entertaining this? You need to act. You need to act and stand up and say no. A man has a right to do what he wants to do with his property, but he can't take our air. They can't take our air. Now, go back to the master plan. Completely in opposition of what we have planned for that area, what elected officials and a committee that we put in power to divide a future for us. Things are changing in Nashua. Nashua is a community of electrical engineers, my two sons, okay? They commute, they go out of work. It's not all... People come out and they go to dinner. Outdoor dining has been a big thing, and hopefully that'll continue. You sit outside at Panucci's, enjoy Nashua, you go shopping. It could be... It's some bumps, but this could be a wonderful downtown. Is this what we want when we're sitting outside? To smell asphalt? But worse than smell it, maybe I'll get used to it in a few years. But worse than smelling it are these toxic chemicals that our children, and in my case, my grandchildren are going to be breathing in. So, you know, I really encourage you to... You know, I've been at meetings over the past year, and I'm just wondering, like, what are we waiting for? What are we waiting for? Let's move on with this property. You've already approved with Imagine Nashua, these beautiful apartments, multi-use. A person like myself, I could buy an apartment and live downstairs. I can go to the store, I can walk, maybe get on a train. Young singles will come in and they'll be traveling to this whole corridor on Route 3. And none of these things have been addressed. And I feel that the applicant, in that introduction, really opened the door to all these issues again. There was a lot of talk about what they did in the papers they filed, and didn't address a single concern. Okay. I hope you're going to stand up. I hope you're really going to stand up for the citizens of Nashua and reject this application. Let them put a lumberyard. But that area is going to change. You've got a train station. Think about the plan. You've got a train station. You're going to have multi-use housing. You're going to have little shops are going to open. You're going to have stores. Think ahead. Because nothing that... You have to... You have... You really have to have a vision. You have to have a vision for where this town is going. And it's not going to trucks, diesel trucks, dump trucks, spewing a little, as one of the attorneys said, little particulates. It sounded like cartoon characters when they talked about them, for God's sakes. And they're going to float into the air, and the smoke stacks are higher than the little children. I mean, come on. Come on, we're all adults in this room. And please, stand up and act and just reject this application. This is the wrong, wrong, wrong thing for Nashua. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Cohoon, and I live on 30 Greenwood Drive.
Sorry, can you just pull the mic down? There you go.
I'm embarrassed that I have to come here tonight, that this has been going on. I'm embarrassed that you, the commission, has not killed this. You know, has anybody gone in a three-mile radius and asked every resident in that neighborhood what they want to do? Maybe they're old, maybe they can't come. But this would destroy that area particularly, but all of downtown. And I just think it's really sad. I can assure you that the owners do not live anywhere near this and probably don't really care about those people, but we do. I don't live near that area, but I've heard people already say they're going to... They'll be able to smell it and everything else. Give me a break. You know, we're spending all this money for housing, this, that and the other thing. Put another low-income housing there. But do not, I repeat, do not put this asphalt plant in there, okay? We cannot afford to have it. You know, we're at a stage that we're closer to dying than living. But if you put this in this, you are going to kill our grandchildren, and I think this in this, you are going to kill our grandchildren, and I think that is totally unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tim Senet, I live at 62 Wonder Hill Street here in Nashua, in the Crown Hill neighborhood of Ward 7. I've illustrated my proximity to the asphalt proposed site a number of different ways. Today, I learned it is less than a four-minute ride by electric bird scooter to the proposed asphalt plant, so. I, I've spoken at length up here and on the big screen there about my opposition to this, so I won't belabor the point too much, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. Something I've tried to bring to this lectern every time that I've come up here is the emphasis that people live here, and that's an emphasis that I see glossed over in this application time and time again. I'm going to, per the board's direction, point to the new information that was received on May 26th, I'm looking at the response chart, line 146D4, wherein they respond that the proposed use is consistent with the other industrial uses in the area and the permitted uses of the underlying GI zone. The existing uses, with emphasis on existing, include aggregate and road construction materials, manufacturing, auto repair, construction yards, multiple companies, stoneworks, and junk removal. Very conspicuously absent from this list is residential use. People live here. If you were present or watching during the last meeting when I presented via Zoom, you saw my pictures that just shifted mere feet away from pictures presented by the applicant that showed when you go just to the left of a junkyard, you find residents. When you go just beyond the proximity of the property line, you find residents, and it's residents that are staying there. We've heard the applicant saying, "We're not going anywhere," and nobody's asking them to. I've spoken to numerous people about this plan, and not once has I, have I heard a single person say, "Well, Newport's got to go." Newport doesn't have to go, they've been there for years. But this proposed use of the property is not consistent with the neighborhood and not consistent with the, with the master plan, the Imagine Nashua. Another item that I'd like to point to is just a few lines down on line 146D6. It refers to a quote from Mr. Hudson about a year ago, on June 2nd, 2022, citing that traffic volumes proposed on the streets are fairly low, and from a capacity standpoint on Commercial Street and Temple Street, it's not a concern. A year ago, that may have been accurate, but we're focused on new information today. When I first stood up here, I spoke about concerns of neighborhood children in the areas of Bridge Street and the adjoining side streets walking to Dr. Crisp's school. We have since learned and seen large exploration of redistricting of the elementary schools here in Nashua. Proposed plans exist for the closure of an elementary school at Mount Pleasant, as well as plans that would redistrict the area in the, in the event that Mount Pleasant were to stay open. In either plan, those neighborhoods are removed from the Dr. Crisp districting and are sent to schools that are further than the district's proximity for walking, and so the traffic is going to increase, not only in addition to the applicant's numerous trucks coming in and out, but now with school buses, busing children in that area to the Mount Pleasant School in the event that it stays open, if not, then to further schools away such as Charlotte Ave, Amherst Street, and beyond. These are the considerations that we need to make. I know we've heard up here before that we, we need to think in the here and the now, but Nashua doesn't stop here and now. Nashua doesn't, Nashua doesn't exist a day at a time. Nashua exists in the past, it exists in the present, and exists in the future. These considerations do need to be made, otherwise we wouldn't have a master plan. Without these considerations, the master plan wouldn't be listed as the number-one criteria for this board's review of plans and whether or not they should be approved. I think sufficient evidence has been given to show that in spite of the applicant's responses, this is not consistent with the master plan, it's not consistent with the overall scope of where Nashua is headed in the next five, 10, 15, 20, or 25 years, and I think it needs to be voted down tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson. I'm a member of the Board of Education, but I'm not, don't shoot me on the redistricting plan, please. And I'm here speaking in behalf of myself as a resident of the city. You know, I haven't come to very many of these meetings because I've been so busy with the Board of Education, but I think it's really sad, even when I was an alderman and on the board before, that we, the people of this city, have to come and fight for our neighborhoods, time in and time out. You know, it's always, we've been called the nimby's, not in my neighborhood, but to put something like this in a neighborhood, I grew up in New York, as you can tell by my accent, and I used to go, when I'd go into Queens of Manhattan, I would see the smog, and I got used to that. You got used to the smells, but why would we have to get used to the smells of this asphalt and all the toxicity that comes out of this? Why should we, the people, have to say that a neighborhood is going to be broken up because of this? A project like this should be on the outside of the city, in its own area, not in the downtown city of Nashua. Yes, we have kids in the neighborhood, and whether or not they're going to be continuing Dr. Crisp's school or not, I don't know, but you know what? It's about we, the people, and I don't see any aldermen here tonight, the ward aldermen or the six aldermen at large, and shame on them, because they're the ones who are elected to represent these people in this audience here tonight. They're elected, and they should be here, supporting their beliefs here, especially the ward aldermen. And as I see the group of people here, and I would assume that these are the men that are representing that company, and you take a look at them, and I look at them, it's a business, I get it, it's a business to make money, but that business to make money can hurt this whole city in the future and now. That we, again, the people who pay the taxes for our neighborhoods so we can live in the neighborhoods, and what are they going to do? They're going to pollute our neighborhood, they're going to pollute the city. If you looked at New York and the orange fog, we don't need to have a black fog in this city over our heads. So what we, the people, need to do is stop having to come to the planning board and begging whether you live on the north side, the west side, or whatever part of this city, that smell is going to resonate. If there's, and if there's a spill or something, forget it. And I remember when we were talking, even with DPW, with the new facility, we didn't want the trucks going up and down West Hollis Street because of the amount of traffic it's going to be. Again, please do the right thing, do not allow this plant to come into the city, and think about us, we, the people, who pay taxes on our property, and that we have to come here, no matter what part of the city, to defend and protect the people in this neighborhood. Stop it now, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jordan Thompson. Do I have to say my address as well?
Yes.
Okay, I'm at 11 Love Wolf Street in Nashua. I just want to say, I'm going to try to keep this very short, I'm sure many of you noticed in this room, there were people at the back, we had an interpreter at the back of this room throughout this entire session, this is not the first meeting that we've had interpreted. I am the environmental justice advocate for the Conservation Law Foundation, and we've been working with the Granite State Organizing Project to get interpreters for these meetings, because we're here in this room, talking about an asphalt plant, this proposed site is in a neighborhood that is predominantly people who have English as a second or third language, they're speaking Spanish, they're speaking Portuguese. Were any of the applicant's materials translated for those people to read, to understand? Was the agenda for this meeting translated for people in that neighborhood to understand? You're ultimately making decisions and deciding policy for people without them at the table, because you're not even considering them as people. This is something that I hope to work with all of you on, but it's something that needs to be taken under consideration in the first place.
Good evening. Heidi Tramarko, also with the Conservation Law Foundation, and I work with Jordan. And we have submitted letters, and I won't repeat those comments, but I want to address some of the new issues that have come up. And you've heard from the community this kind of continuous and almost unanimous, or maybe it is unanimous, opposition to the plant, and I think that's really telling, and the board needs to use that as evidence towards, does this plant fit into this community, and will it have an impact, which is one of the required criteria. And no amount of conditions is going to make this plant fit and make it safe. You can't condition it into a permit, it's not safe for the community. And the board shouldn't and cannot impose enough conditions to make it work. Where the plant has failings and the applicant hasn't met their burden to demonstrate, and conditions aren't going to save this application. The burden is on the applicant, and you've heard from many people and many experts about the fatal flaws with this plant. And they haven't met that burden, they haven't demonstrated enough to, to get the permit here, and that is their problem. If they haven't shown it, they don't get the permit, the board isn't going to condition it into a permit. And you could see that in the first staff memo, those gaps were pointed out, and those gaps remain, the May submittals don't address those fatal flaws. So for instance, the lack of complying with the master plan, you've heard that over and over again. In their recent submittal, the only thing I could see that was new there is the applicant is telling the planning board that because the proposed area is supposed to be pedestrian-friendly and walkable and bikeable, that because they're producing asphalt, they're encouraging walking and biking. I think this is laughable. There's no reason why the asphalt production has to happen in the walkable and bikeable area. They can produce the asphalt elsewhere, asphalt elsewhere, and then lay it down. So this is not, they haven't met their burden of saying they're complying with the master plan, they're not advancing the walkability and the bikeability of the neighborhood, they're not complying with the, with the transit overlay district. The application is full of these kind of conclusory and unsupported statements. You saw that in the most recent submittal, they referred to the plant as being state-of-the-art with no evidence, but they said, "It's like a plant in Massachusetts that some people have said is the cleanest permit in Massachusetts." That is not evidence on the record. That is somebody saying that somebody said that it was great, and the board should just take their word for it, that this will also be great. That's not enough. And we've laid out in our comments why it doesn't meet the criteria, they are listed there, there's plenty of evidence for the board to deny the application. It is incompatible with the master plan, the transfer overlay district, and it's going to harm the health and safety of the neighborhood. And that's everything, we'll urge the board to deny the application. Thank you.
Peter Schaefer, 15 East Street. I was on the master plan committee, and I know that two members of the planning board were on the master plan committee, so I know, and all of you know what's in the master plan, and what the city would like to do, and where it is moving and where it's been moving, and that we're finally getting out of the industrial age and into the new age in this area, okay? You've also heard from a lot of school kids, not this time around, but before, you've heard a lot of school, school kids know whether we should have an asphalt plant here or not, okay? Now, there's been a lot of rational arguments for months now about this, so I'm going to give you guys a break. I'm not going to make any rational arguments, okay? But what I'm going to ask you is, think about this plant that would probably be here 10, 20, 30 years or more, if you were proven, okay? I ask you, what are you going to tell your kids when they come home from school? In 10 years, what are you going to tell your grandkids when they come home from school? What are your kids going to tell your grandkids when they come home from school? Everybody knows this is wrong. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Fader, I'm a resident of the neighboring town of Hollis. I'm also on the steering committee of the Medical Society Consortium on Climate and Health, which is a national physician organization concerned with climate change and air pollution issues. I feel that the applicants have not made a sufficient case for the air pollution impacts of this plant. They continually refer to the work done by Dr. Green, which showed the effects of only a few potential pollutants from this plant, and also the diesel exhaust pollution from the trucks involved. There are multiple other pollutants that come from asphalt that were never addressed by Dr. Green, many of these are carcinogens. We do know that the incidence of cancer and pulmonary diseases is much higher in people within a close radius of asphalt plants than it is in other areas. So I really think that the, the pollution issues have not been adequately addressed by the applicant. The other issue I would like to make is the potential impact of this plant on the business of Nashua. As a Hollis resident, I enjoy coming to Nashua frequently to dine at the many good restaurants that are on Main Street. This plant is going to emit a very foul-smelling smell, which is sometimes going to go right to those restaurants. There is no way anybody can right now predict the wind prediction, or the wind direction in the future. Climate change has altered weather and wind directions in a significant way. The recent brown fog that was inundating the East Coast and all of our major cities was a result of smoke coming down from the fires in Canada, blowing southerly and westerly, which is exactly the opposite way that wind normally travels. That's the same direction that will blow asphalt from this plant right onto Main Street. If those restaurants always smell like asphalt, nobody's going to keep going to them, and the business of this city is going to suffer significantly. I urge you to deny this application. Thank you.
I'm Dennis Ruddy, I live on Cottage Ave, about three blocks from the proposed site. And my, my concern is multiple. Number one, I live there, I walk the city all the time. The kids on bikes and scooters and skateboards and doing this while they're on them. I almost got run over by a kid on a bicycle because he was looking down on, on the sidewalk today. This is today. They're going to do the same thing, they, they fill that neighborhood. I don't want to see somebody sitting up in a truck that's not going to miss these kids, so that danger is not talked about, and I can't believe they said it's going to hold the traffic. Have you been on East Hollis trying to get across the bridge? Anytime in rush hour, morning or evening, it's insane, and they, they must have done their, their calculations during COVID, when no one was on the road. Because now, it's horrible. Also, I don't want to have to smell that, I've got allergies. The way I look at it, if you really want to do your job well, put scrubbers in there, they'll scrub every pollutant out, clean it up, so nothing will get into the environment. If they're willing to put that money in, let them put the asphalt plant in. I doubt they're willing to do that, they want to make money, not serve our community, and we should be serving it. By the way, one other note, you know the fire department right next to it? Have you noticed behind it, they put artwork in? That's because the future plan, they're going to walk right across that site that you want to put an asphalt plant in. They want to extend the bike and walking lane. It's already laid down, they've already put the, the artwork in, they haven't paved it yet, but that's the future plan, go right across that old railroad bridge. Now the asphalt plant's going to be in the middle of that. Once again, the master plan, that's what we're here for. We want to make Nashua a beautiful place, not a smelly, dangerous place. I would just say no, that, they have no place downtown. Reject us, please.
Hi, Shelley Devine, state rep from Nashua, Ward 1. Shelley Devine from Nashua, Ward 1. I'm here to oppose this, and my feeling is, I, I kind of had a thought about business and what this would, say this goes through, and the board decides to allow it, because for whatever reasons, the city of Nashua doesn't want to go up against any sort of lawsuits against the party that wants to put this in. But my perspective as a businessperson is- But my perspective as a businessperson is, if you're putting in this long-term, wouldn't there be legal repercussions as a business, putting in this asphalt plant with the community? You have young children playing there. I would think at some point, within the next few years, they would suffer some sort of added litigation from some family member. And my feeling is, as a businessperson, that doesn't make sense to be in continuous litigation, always litigating for something that makes no sense within a community. I get the business perspective of, oh, I have this business, I have a business, you know, down south, it's running well, it's operable. I did all this sort of work and went through years of litigation to get it approved to go in. And now I want to, in an area that actually has, I mean, there's a huge surrounding. They have all the quarries there, all that. But now you want to put it into a small community. Inside a city that I'm sure the person that owns, or the businessperson that owns that business, goes and dines and eats on Main Street. And do you really want to smell your own? And I think the objective is, as a businessperson, is in the long term, you're going to turn around and sell that property somehow. And then we're, as a city, stuck with a plant and what do we do with it? Or whatever. And I just don't think that that's a smart business move. And I would think, as a business owner, maybe it might be time to rethink what I'm doing with that property instead of putting in a plant that's harmful and probably knows that it's harmful and wouldn't even want to be there myself in the long term. And that's all I have to say. I hope today that you will decide to vote on this issue and put some ease to the people's minds that live in that community instead of dragging that out. And if you can't make a decision tonight, then the person that owns the company, maybe he or his partners tend to rethink and reimagine the property that they're on. There's kids that live there. Would you want your kids, you know, living there too? That's all I'm saying. And thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just a quick time check. We've got about three or four minutes left on my 45 minutes, so I see two more people. I'm going to take these next two people, and I'm going to cut off the public comment at that point. So come on in.
Hi, my name is DeeDee Thurbert, 37 Gilson Road. I actually work on Temple Street, so when I heard about the asphalt plant, I certainly had concerns for myself and my coworkers. But a bigger concern that I have, and I'm not sure if people are aware of this, is that the building I work in, we're on the second floor, but on the bottom floor, there's actually an early head start in that building on Temple Street. So that means there's a playground there. That means the kids, an early head start means that it's infants and toddlers. So those infants and toddlers are out on that playground every day for extended amounts of time. They also have strollers where they take the kids, infants and toddlers, for walks in that neighboring area. So I just want to raise awareness about that building, the business, and the kids that are actually there on a daily basis and to have, take that into consideration with that vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joanne St. John. I have been a community activist in this city for many years. I moved here in 1977. And between 1977 and 1980, the area that the applicant is in discussion about was a busy area, mostly commercial walk-in business, the lumberyard. There was a kitchen design place, the stone yard, coordinated with all of that. It was sort of a version of a chopped-up Lowe's and Home Depot all in once. But anyways, so let's just go back. I shouldn't have even brought that up, but quickly. When I first heard about this last June or July, I can't remember, I was one of the people who spearheaded a campaign to stop this because I knew it was bad for our city. We started with six people on my sunroom. That was in 2022. As we all know, that has developed. The grassroots grew. It continues to grow. When we first started standing on Main Street, handing out flyers about what was going on, there was no one, and there are people here who stood there with me, that was aware that this was being proposed, and this was like in August and September. So grassroots does work. I know that Mr. De Felice said that he's not going anywhere. And I can assure you that myself and the grassroots people in this city who care about our children are not going anywhere either. We are not going to be worn down. We are not going to be scared away. We are going to continue to grow until the right thing is done. I trust that this board is, I can't see any, I've gone over it in my head. I can't honestly say, if I was on this board, and I'm a very fair person, that I would have any doubt in my mind that this is the wrong thing for our city. I know that you all put in an awful lot of work and an awful lot of time. I've been on many committees. I know how much it takes out of you. And I probably sound a little angry, but I'm not at you, but I just wanted to impress upon that. So we have gone back and forth with stalls and new evidence and half-baked scientific ideas and all this stuff, and we've put up with it for quite a long time. Tonight, when the applicant had supposedly new information, I thought, hmm, I wonder if that information is pertinent. I found it not to be. The information that I thought would have been great was that the acreage had expanded from less than three to 17 acres, which is what he has in Westford, Massachusetts. That, and speaking of that, it took them six years for that approval. That is an isolated, an area right next to a highway. And when it was finally approved, there was a stipulation that those trucks were not allowed to go on certain roads. They have to go directly onto that highway and no other way. So this is a whole different situation. And I think that Mr. De Felice knows that. I know he's a good businessman. I know he thought he saw his opportunity. But I know that in his heart, he must know that this is not good for our city going forward. And I beg him to please reconsider your choice going forward for the benefit of our citizens and our children. So the other, the other new information I thought we would have, other than we gained 17 acres, quick access to the highway, no traffic on our roads, would be that, oh, sorry, I lost my, I can't see without my glasses nor with them, that we had taken away all the children and all the schools, and they went to a little peaceful place in a bubble, and they're all protected, okay? That's what I thought the good news or the new things would be. So I could go on, but I think I've said enough. I beg you, I beg you to please do the right thing tonight. And I also beg Mr. De Felice to reconsider if he wants to put an asphalt plant somewhere. It does, he knows, he's got to know, it does not belong here in this part of Nashua. Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for input on that. So then, what I'm going to do at this point, it's 8:40, I'm going to take about a five-minute recess here until 8:45.
Was it scheduled for the general public's speaker's break or was it in our board of people?
No, I have 45 minutes for anybody, so.
I'm just curious.
At this point, all you guys are doing is extending the meeting, so I would, you know, I'd like to move through the meeting if you don't mind. So I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to go into recess. It's 8:40. I'm going to start back up at 8:45. At that point, I'm going to have the opportunity for the applicant for sort of consolidated rebuttal and final comments. Then the board will possibly have questions and talk to staff. So at this point, I'm going to be in recess. Everybody take their seats in quiet sound. Okay, I'm going to call back to order this meeting and this hearing. And at this point, I'm going to ask, as per my earlier agenda here, for the applicant to come forward if they desire. And at this point, you can speak, any kind of rebuttals of any of the public testimony, and then give the board an opportunity to ask any final questions here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Tom Hildreth. I'm with the McLean Middleton Law Firm. I'm working as co-counsel with Mr. Prohlman. I'm sorry. And I'm pin-shitting for my colleague, John Weaver, who actually submitted the material supplement, the filing. And Andy's going to get up after me and kind of wrap things up. I want to just touch on a few of the things that John mentioned in his filing, one of which is just for kind of legal reservation of rights issues. We maintain on behalf of the applicant that there's no basis to apply the provisions of the transportation-oriented district overlay zone to this site. The ordinance, in its own terms of defining what that ordinance, that overlay district means, says that it's within proximity of some kind of bus station, train station, or something in the district. And there is none in this location, and there's no reasonably foreseeable chance that there will be. So there's no basis to apply that overlay district to this application. Nevertheless, we believe that we comply with all of those standards. Similarly, we reserve the right to contest that the mixed-use provisions of the ordinance don't apply to the district. They only go on a tag-along basis to the transportation-oriented overlay district. And if that one doesn't apply, then neither do the mixed-use provisions apply. But again, we contend that the proposal satisfies all of those requirements. We maintain that under New Hampshire law, a master plan is not a binding document to which a site plan application has to adhere. And there's case law to the effect that aspirations in a master plan that haven't yet made their way into a zoning ordinance can't bind an applicant or the planning board. Nevertheless, we maintain that the proposed application does comply with substantial provisions of the master plan and also with the East Hollis Street area plan. And lastly, we reserve our right to contest that a municipality can regulate a And lastly, we reserve our right to contest that a municipality can regulate emissions from a hot-mix asphalt plant, which are already regulated by the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Air Resources Division and a permit for which we'll issue for this site and with which the operations will be fully compliant. Those are our statement of reserved rights, briefly by way of rebuttal. Every person who came here tonight to this meeting walked on, rode on, or drove on asphalt. Asphalt is everywhere, and it has to come from somewhere. The applicant isn't proposing this location because it is an environmentally and socially, socio-economically disadvantaged area. That has nothing to do with it. The applicant's proposing this application because it owns the property, it's in the business, and it's smack dab in the middle of the general industrial zoning district where the use is expressly permitted. The DeFaleces have lived in the city of Nashua for a long time. They love and care for this city, its residents, its children, its elderly, its ambiance, its environment, as much as anybody who lives in the city, who raises a family in the city, who owns a business in the city. As a matter of fact, many members of the DeFalese family will be as impacted by anyone by the operation of this plant because it will occur immediately adjacent to their Newport construction site, where many of them work on a full-time basis. So when other people may be at work out of the neighborhood, the DeFaleces will be on the property, either working at this plant or the adjacent property while the plant's in active operations. They're not asking anybody to suffer anything that they themselves aren't willing to endure. And they know, because they operate a state-of-the-art facility in Westford, that nothing will have to be endured that is going to be of the kind of imagined horribles that you heard tonight. We maintain, as we say in the supplemental filing, that as a permitted use, it simply cannot be denied at the site plan review process, that the most that can occur is reasonable conditions are introduced to ensure that any potentially deleterious impacts are mitigated to the fullest extent possible. For example, I'm referring to RSA 67444, Site Plan Review Regulations, where it says that a planning board may, by its site plan review regulations, regulate, quote, "undesirable and preventable elements of pollution," like noise, smoke, soot, particulates, or other discharges. Every time you start your car, every time you turn on a light, every time you start your leaf blower, you're committing some kind of pollution. Some of it's preventable, some of it's not, some of it's not, none of it's desirable. Site Plan Review Regulations can control preventable forms of pollution, not all forms of pollution. And we submit that the state-of-the-art facility that's been proposed here, to the greatest extent possible, controls all of the controllable pollution. A number of people have talked about the master plan, but nobody has pointed to a single specific provision of the plan to say, "This is a line with which this proposal is inconsistent." And when we went through the master plan and the East Hollis Street area plan, we found lots of places where this proposal is fully consistent. I'm just going to read one of them to you. The East Hollis Street area plan is older than the master plan. It's expressly incorporated by reference into the master plan. And in it, there's this paragraph. "Most of the East Hollis Street area plan is zoned general industrial. This zoning evolved from the historic uses of this district, which were primarily heavy industry, situated to take advantage of the rail transportation in the area. The uses allowed in this zone include businesses and a range of industrial uses, including heavy industrial uses, construction materials, distribution and processing, outdoor storage of materials or vehicles, research and development in manufacturing." At the time that this was written, there was an active ready-mixed concrete plant operating in the same vicinity. And then it importantly ends by saying, "These uses are viewed as playing an important role in the district's and the city's future." Several people have spoken, I think this started with the mayor's statement from December of 2022, as if they have a particular vision in mind for what this area could become. And of course, a master plan is kind of a visioning document. But everybody brings to that their own vision, what's in their own mind. There are over 290 permitted uses in the table of uses in the Nashua zoning ordinance. More than 90 of them are permitted in the general industrial district. None of those are residential uses. There's not a single residential use that's permitted by right in the general industrial zoning district. So any residential uses that exist there exist by virtue of some other way, they weren't permitted by right. But the district does exist to support exactly the kind of industry that manufacturing of asphalt, which is listed at line 177 of the ordinance, is expressly permitted. So when people talk about somehow this is inconsistent with the notion of a mixed-use district, what they fail to do is define what does a mixed-use district mean? And if you look for your ordinance, you won't find any direct definitions of that. But we've suggested in the supplemental materials at least two ways to do that. One is, the 96 uses that are permitted in the general industrial district, they range in quite a variety. We have them in a footnote in one of the materials that John prepared. When the city of Nashua adopted that zoning ordinance, bringing all those uses together, they clearly decided that those uses could exist in a, coexist in a mixed-use kind of way. That's one way you can do it. The second way is you can look at the mixed-use district itself, the mixed-use overlay district. It's not us, there's a district just to the north of us, which is a mixed-use and general industrial district. And the way that district works is, every underlying use is permitted, including asphalt manufacturing. And on top of that, you can layer on some creative residential districts. So the national zoning ordinance, its master plan, its East Hollis Street area plan, that contemplate a mixed-use district, they're not inconsistent with what's proposed here. This is an industrial use, it's straight in the middle of the fairway, it's expressly called out as a permitted use, and it belongs in this district, and that's why it's proposed here. The applicant has offered to staff to bring in the engineering firm that's designing the actual components of the plant. The applicant has offered to staff to bring in the firm that has prepared the Air Resources Division permit filing. We can bring in someone from the Air Resource Division themselves. The fact of the matter is, these uses are very minor sources of pollution. It's going to be regulated and permitted by the DES Air Resources Division. The applicant invited board members and others to come to their operating plant in Westford to see for themselves, to experience for themselves, that it doesn't smell, that it doesn't produce the kind of noxious effects that have been talked about here. And some of you, some of you did that. And I hope that your memories are with you as you deliberate on our proposal. Andy's going to talk briefly about the conditions of approval that we've been working on staff with since Friday afternoon. There's 26 of them. We are 85% of the way in agreement with staff. And Andy will speak to kind of the last little bit of distance that we think is going to require some further conversation. I'm sorry that so many people got ginned up on the notion that this was some kind of a political process, and if you came out in great numbers, you could overwhelm the law, you could overwhelm the facts, and you could kind of carry the day. That's not the way it works. I'm afraid many people were misled by the role of the site plan process. We have the statements in our letter about what the Supreme Court has said in terms of the limits of site plan review.
Excuse me just a second. I would ask, you know, we allowed all of the members of the public to testify without it. No, I'm sorry, sir. Yes. Yes, that's fine. But I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, I would ask that everyone give the same courtesy to the applicant while they are speaking. Thank you.
I would ask the applicant to insult the audience.
Excuse me, that's enough. No further comments from the audience, please.
It's not intended as an insult. I'm sorry if someone took it that way. You know, it's, it's, from an applicant's perspective, I'll just say rhetorically, it's insulting when hyperbolic statements about dead children and everyone getting cancer and, you know, people being put in a hermetically sealed bubble, as if that's going to be new information that's going to be germane to the case. That's insulting to the applicant, insulting to the process. The process is well-defined, the law is clear, it's a permitted use. We've done everything that staff has asked in terms of, of conditions. We stand by the fact that we have a state-of-the-art proposal facility. If any board member thinks that there's an element of this plant that could be made better, we'd like to hear about it, because we would be happy to do it. The applicant's in the business, they're in the industry, they know what they're doing, they do it successfully other places, they want to do it here in the community where they live and work. I'll let Andy wrap it up.
Sorry.
Yeah, we just, we have a couple of questions on a couple of your comments before we go. Yeah, I just, I have a question. So is it, is it your position that a TOD can exist without the station? Because it, it kind of seems like there'd be never any use for a TOD.
You have one.
Can I, let me finish, and then you can respond. You know, and I've been on this board for a decade or more, and been dealing with these types of districts for a long time as well. You know, the TOD, in our view, is a planning tool for us to be able to, you know, put a vision on an area. And to say that I'd have to put that vision on after the area exists seems kind of ass-backwards to me.
So you have a bus, you have a bus station right behind us here.
Yeah.
And it's perfectly appropriate to put a, an overlay district around that if you want to do some planning relative to an orientation to that bus station, right? And if there were a train station in the city, it would be perfectly appropriate, you don't have to have an overlay district to have a train station, right? The train station is a, is a transportation infrastructure, you can put it wherever, you know, the city can assert its kind of sovereign immunity and decide, "We're going to put it here," right? You're going to put it somewhere in proximity to an existing track, presumably. That doesn't mean you have to have an overlay district. The overlay comes on top of that and say, you know, "We have this transportation-related amenity, and now we want to do some creative planning around it to take advantage of its presence," right? There is clear case law, and we cite it in the material, that says that a municipality's mere plan to do something in the future isn't a basis to regulate or deny a present application with which the city thinks it may be inconsistent. But I would argue, and we did argue, that the proposed asphalt plant isn't inconsistent with a passenger rail station or a transportation overlay-oriented district. And we pointed to the area in Watertown, Mass., where there's a multiplicity of uses, residential, commercial, retail, so forth, in close proximity to a much larger plant. We mentioned the fact that at the terminal end of the MBTA is a gigantic Boston sand and gravel operation, around which there are hundreds of millions of dollars of current investments being made in residences and offices and biopharmaceutical research facilities, all within close walking distance to the.
Yeah, I'm not making that point. The point, what I thought I heard from you was, you could not put a TOD down without that in place.
Yeah, so I'm looking at, I'm looking from the line in the ordinance that says, "Locational criteria. The TOD overlay district shall be located within a reasonable walking distance to a transit station." And there is no transit station in this neighborhood. The only transit station in the city that I know of is the bus station next door, or the one at exit eight. And there, you could do whatever you want. And, but again, they don't have to come first. You could have a, you could have a train station without an overlay district surrounding it, but.
But you're saying you can't have a TOD without a train station?
Without some kind of, of reasonable walking distance to a transit station. That's right. Or that's, at least that's enforceable. Well, that's what, we are reserving our right to make that claim.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's what you think is the.
Yeah, that's the basis of the reservation. That's right. But we still go through the criteria and show that we meet it nonetheless.
Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On another one of the, the legal points that you raised, I just want to understand, is it your testimony that if a use is a permitted use in a zoning district, that by definition the planning board does not have authority to deny an application that is a permitted use?
Not on the basis, no, that's right. I do. I maintain that, yes. You can regulate it.
What would be the basis for that position?
The, the case law that says, what is the role of a site plan review process? I can read the.
Well, I guess, let me.
Read the text.
I, I did read the text. I also reviewed the, you know, the Town of Hanover case in particular that you cited, apparently, for that proposition.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, I just don't understand how you could read that case to support that expansive of a position. I mean, I would note, you know, that the, if you go on to review the entirety of that case, I, I don't, I don't see anywhere where it's, where the Supreme Court says that a planning board is deprived of the authority to deny an application simply because the use is a permitted use in the district.
If you, I, I agree with you that it doesn't say that as expressly, and this may be the case that makes that law, right? But if you read the cases, and there's only a handful of them, where a site plan application has been denied, it has been denied because an applicant has been unwilling to fulfill a reasonable condition of approval. Look at the Basin Properties, the Hanover Project in Lebanon, where the project proponent thought that a 25-foot landscape buffer was too big, and they refused to accede to that condition of approval, and the site plan application was denied. And the Supreme Court said that was not an unreasonable exercise of the, of the, of the planning board's site plan power. So if you have, this is why we've been asking. We've asked staff, we've asked this board in letters. We've said, "If you have reasonable conditions, whether it relates to elements of our plant, how it operates, any features like that, that you'd like to see, let us know, because we want to abide by them." But to your point, I do not think, if the applicant's willing to do that, you can deny an expressly permitted use on the basis of site plan review regulations unless you're going to apply some condition of approval that the applicant, you know, can't or won't agree to.
Right, I guess I just respectfully, you know, disagree that, that the case law says that I would, again, you know, the Town of Hanover case suggests that the, the prior precedent is that board decisions can't be based upon personal opinions or vague concerns. The implication is that if the decision is based upon, you know, objective criteria and specified concerns, that, that there would be a basis for denial. So I understand your position and the right you're reserving, but I just want to express the view myself, and not speaking for any other board members, that I simply don't see that as being supported in the case law.
So my, my office represented the town of, Dartmouth College in that case. I'm, I worked on that case. I'm very familiar with the, the facts and the law, and I agree, it, it only comes up to the edge and doesn't make the statement as starkly as I wish it did. As I said, this may be the case that does that. But when you, when you read the, the decision where it says that a planning board's review does not give the planning board the authority to deny a particular use simply because it does not feel that the proposed use is an appropriate use of the land. And when you look at the basis on which they denied it, this was individual board members saying, "Well, maybe it's permitted there," because it complied with the zoning ordinance, right? The, the proposed indoor practice facility complied with the zoning ordinance. But there are people who didn't like it. They thought it cast too big a shadow, right? It was going to overshadow the adjacent residential neighborhood. And the Supreme Court said, "You can't do that. You know, this is a permitted use." And that's what we're saying here. Again, we'd like to get to the stage where we're talking about conditions, because that's where, that's where we think the action is. But I'll let Andy speak to that a little more fully. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. There we go. Mr. Chairman, again, Andy Pearlman for the applicants. Mr. Chairman, and for the folks in the room, I think you'll be happy to know that I'm the last speaker on this application. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to respond to a couple of points made in recent submittals and then kind of wrap up the, the three applications that we have before you. First, the city of Nashua's Health Department provided a letter to you dated June 8th, 2023, where they expressed their concern about any mitigation measures and possible pollution. And I would just say that on behalf of the applicant, we agree. We have those same concerns. We want to address any, we're going to include all mitigation measures with our applications. We're going to make sure they work. And we do not disagree with that concern because, you know, we, we work and live in the city as well. The, again, as I said earlier, based upon the, the expert evidence from Doctors Green and Dr. Zemba from your, your, your experts, Sandburn Head, they're largely in agreement. The asphalt plant will have no, from their testimony, you know, all of the health impacts are below all regulatory thresholds as Dr. Green testified and she provided in her report. So we don't take issue with the Health Department's letter. We agree that we're going to address all mitigating factors. Secondly, Attorney Manzelli raised a couple of points tonight in her letter. And I just wanted to speak to one point that actually was not discussed tonight, but is in her letter because there's like a last-minute Hail Mary where there's an argument made by both Attorney Manzelli and another gentleman, Gregory Indruk, somehow arguing that we're not a permitted use, that we're, we should be coded under Use 172, which is, requires a conditional use permit as opposed to 177, which is a permitted use. First off, this issue has been decided over a year ago. Our application came in in December 2021. And throughout the entire time, throughout this whole process, we've all been working under Land Use Code number 177. Second of all, it's not, just plain not true. The argument is we're not, we're not making asphalt, we're just mixing asphalt with products. It's, it's not true. We're manufacturing asphalt, combining aggregate, combining all kinds of products, manufacturing on-site. So I just want to just call that out for the board. We, we just plain didn't see that that was a, that was an accurate statement. And if you look to the land use codes, the land-based classification standards, those little numbers next to the land use codes, you know, we fall under that 3310, and we don't, we don't see that that is a, a genuine issue. I do want to summarize a couple of points that, that have not been talked about. There was reports with respect to property values provided to the board, and there were a couple of reports, we provided two. We provided a report dated February 15th, 2023 from the Minco Corporation. We also provided a Keller Williams opinion letter dated March 20th, 2003. And the Minco report largely focused on the Watertown plant that we've talked about. The Watertown plant is, has been there, owned by aggregate entities, it's been there forever, at least 75 years, and the entire city has grown up around it. What the Minco report tells us is that there was no impact on property values. In fact, there's been a lot, a lot of investment around this asphalt plant as it's grown up with residential, commercial, retail stores, restaurants, offices. So we have that with respect to property values. The Keller Williams report speaks to actual comps, actual comparative home sales around existing asphalt plants, the Continental Plant in Londonary, the Newport's Westford Plant, the Watertown Plant, and what the Keller Williams report shows, that the actual values of home sales, single-family homes and condos, the asphalt plants have had no impact, have just appreciated values of the residential properties around asphalt plants at all three sites. And they compare that to the city's BBG appraisal report that really didn't look at the local plants or the Watertown plants, that they looked at plants from North Carolina and Washington, same for the cost-benefit group analysis that Attorney Manzelli provided. Talking about dairy farms in Wisconsin or an article about quarries, really just apples and oranges, they really missed the mark. We have property values evidence before you that works in our favor. There's a lot of concern about all these horrendous trucks and the millions of trucks that were coming and going from, as a result of this asphalt plant. And I would just remind the board that you remember when Jason Plo did the initial traffic impact threshold worksheet? We didn't even have to do a traffic study because our traffic counts are so low. We didn't meet the city's threshold to do a traffic study. Nevertheless, Mr. Husband said, okay, that's all well and good, but please give us additional information about, all about your traffic, all about intersection impact. Please provide, you know, we would, we would appreciate if you could fund some grid smart cameras, that's fine. But again, our traffic counts are so low for this site, we don't even hit the thresholds to require a study. Just briefly, just to remind the board, you know, what's been presented, you know, please don't forget, we, the, the Felices paid for a sound study by Kavanaugh Tachi, and their conclusion was that while Nashua doesn't have a sound ordinance, if you take the nuisance threshold, that we're going to be under that nuisance threshold. Manon Paquette's plans have been presented and revised, and we have another draft coming. The, to the extent that there's any smell coming from this, from the actual asphalt itself, the descent odor reduction material is going to be processed into the asphalt, and the trucks are going to be covered. The loading area where the trucks are, are going in is enclosed. Most asphalt plants don't have an enclosed loading area where the trucks get loaded from the silos dropping down. It's all enclosed. Garage doors come down, minimize any impact to the neighbors. And finally, the green toxicology, again, everyone talks about all the horrible pollution, but it's, it's as if no one even paid attention to look at the green toxicology report. So we believe the expert evidence supports the application. And getting to the applications, Mr. Chairman and members, we have three applications before the board. We have a subdivision application, a site plan application for the Newport Construction Site at 145 Temple, and the asphalt plant site plan for the site at 147 Temple. Briefly, the subdivision plan is straightforward. One lot into two meets all the dimensional criteria, typical utility sewer, the city sewer, penetrant water, ever source. We will have cross-access easements addressing parking and access to and from both lots, to commercial, to Temple. We have one waiver request, and that's a waiver from the requirement of 19280D10 to show existing conditions within 1,000 feet of the site. We believe that would, it would be excessive and unnecessary hardship to require the applicant to provide information, largely because, and, and I guess in addition, because all of the information that you've been provided, all the information raised by the neighbors, the area is well-known. We think it'd be a hardship to have to do this, really no upgame to the, to the board. Because of all the information that has been presented, we, we, we need the spirit and intent on that regulation. As to the site plan application, we agree with all the conditions of approval, excuse me, for the subdivision from the, as proposed by staff. The Newport site, proposed lot 93 at 145, again, the site meets all dimensional requirements. It's Newport's offices, operations, the garage repair bays, parking out front, and it's really the exact same use that they're doing today with one exception, and that exception being if the asphalt plant goes in, all the contracted yard that they have spread out through the entire site is going to have to go elsewhere to make room for the asphalt plant, sorry, to make room for the asphalt plant. So again, parking works, 37 parking spaces required, 45 provided, utilities, cross-access easement, all the same stuff. We have a, there was initially a request for a waiver from the lighting, to provide a lighting plan, but we have since provided a lighting plan, so waiver's not needed. We do have one waiver request, 19279EE, to show existing conditions on adjacent parcels for the same reasons on the subdivision, the 1,000 feet. We believe that it would be unnecessary hardship, and because of all the information that you have, we believe the spirit of the ordinance, excuse me, the regulation has been, has been met. And again, we agree with all the proposed conditions from staff for the Newport site plan for the proposed lot 93. And finally, I won't belabor the point on the asphalt plant. We've, you've heard enough. I just have one comment, and that is, we agree with the staff recommendations on the proposed asphalt plant with three exceptions, and I'll speak to those right now. The first is on the proposed condition number two, the hours of operation. The proposed condition has the hours of operation running from...
Please stay on the mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, just, I'm fading. The proposed condition has hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and we are asking that the start be 6:00 AM. We do that because the board will recall that all of our materials submitted from the very start of this case had our opening at 6:00 AM, from the initial plans all the way through until we saw this proposed recommendation. And the reason for that is, is because our customers, the paving companies, have to be on, have to be at their job site typically by 7:00 in the morning. They can't be at their, they can't be at Temple Street at 7:00 in the morning. They got to be at their job site, be it 10 minutes away or an hour away. They're going to be at their job sites earl, as early as possible, typically 7:00 AM. So if we can get them loaded and out the door by 6:30, then, you know, we are, you know, satisfying the customer's needs. And so that, that's our request, that's our reasoning for that one. Secondly, as to conditions number 19 and 25, the proposed conditions 19 and 25, and we were, had a good talk with Mr. Durfee this, late this afternoon, the proposed conditions 19 and 25 speak to proposed monitoring of the site, be it fence line monitoring or monitoring for certain chemical, fence line monitoring is found in section 19, and the certain chemical monitoring is found at proposed condition number 25. Now, please understand, we're not opposed to any monitoring, monitoring the system that the D Felices will be installing. We believe in it, it's going to work, it works in Westford, we're not going to have any issues. So we're not opposed to monitoring. However, we believe the level of detail in these two conditions are premature. And what I mean by that is we would like to have a, a more general condition here so that we can scope out, you know, the exact detail and expert requirements for these, these type of conditions. And this is analogous to a traffic study because traffic studies are done by, are set by a scoping standard. One party just doesn't declare, here's the traffic study, right? That's not the way it works. An applicant, traffic engineer will say, here's what I propose to be the traffic study. And then the city, third parties will say, well, let's, let's talk about the scope. Let's agree upon a scope before you conduct your study. And that's what we want to do here. We want to bring in, if it's Dr. Zemba, Sandburn Head, Dr. Green, we also want to bring in the ex, the true experts in this thing, the Hampshire DES Air Quality, so we can scope out these monitoring systems. Okay, we, we agree with the concept. We just think the level of detail in these proposed conditions are unworkable, but what we're saying is, let's get the experts in a room together, scope out the proposed monitoring, and we can, we're good, we're good with that. Mr. Chairman, that's it. We have an industrial use surrounded, surrounded by, we have a proposed industrial use surrounded by industrial uses in a historically industrial district, permitted under 177 of Land Use Code. We ask for your approval.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd be happy to be done.
At this point, I'll ask from the board, is there any questions for the applicant at this point? So I, I would like to, while we're still in the hearing, I give staff an opportunity here. I have a couple of questions for staff. One, I'd like to hear your opinion of the compliance with the master plan, you know, for this particular project. And I'd like to hear your comments regarding whether or not your, in your opinions that the planning board has the right to, does not have the right to disapprove a, a plan, but all we can do is just keep putting stipulations essentially. It's kind of the way I read it. And I'd like your opinion on whether a TOD can be used as a forward-looking planning tool versus a sort of after-the-fact district once a transit place has been, been constructed. So, you can start in any order you want.
All right.
Make sure you use the mic, please.
Yes. I will, I'll start in reverse order. I'll start with the TOD. I understand the point the applicant is making. The, the language in the ordinance does, this is the location language, the, the location of the district shall be within a reasonable walking distance of a transit station. That is how the, the language reads. I would like to state that the transit station that is right behind City Hall is just about half a mile from the TOD district. I would say that is a reasonable walking distance. We also have two bus routes that go through this district with multiple stops. I believe that that meets the intent of the ordinance. Therefore, I think that the TOD is rightfully established and is, is defensible. I think that we would then venture into a realm of legal debate, which I think the, the court can, can settle if we enter that realm. I'll, I'll leave it at that on the, on the TOD. Regarding the, the master plan, I just want to start with a rather rudimentary analysis of 67418. So this is, this is part of the land use regulations in the state statute. Zoning, land use regulation can only be adopted by municipality if a master plan has been adopted. I think that sets the master plan as the basis for any land use regulatory framework from which a zoning ordinance is crafted. And the Nashua City zoning ordinance goes as far to call out the, the goals, the vision, the objectives of the master plan in multiple sections. I think most importantly in this case, the site plan approval criteria, the site suitability report that's required in the TOD, which is applicable to this application, the ordinance itself calls into consideration with this board the goals of the master plan. So by referencing, even in, in the applicant's package, it states, unless and until a municipality enacts an ordinance to implement recommendations of visions proposed in the master plan, the master plan itself remains merely an unenforceable document. The zoning ordinance references the master plan directly and the goals and objectives. So therefore, I feel that that is compliant with, with the intent. The, the case law referenced, I, I think, is just, just not applicable. It's regarding growth management goals. The master plan for Barnstead has sent a 3% growth management goal, and that wasn't based on fact, and, and the court did not uphold the trial court's upholding of the denial of an application. So I just don't think that it is, is relevant to this case. Remind me of your third question.
The concept of a planning board not being able to deny a permitted use, but only being able to essentially layer on, I guess, stipulation after stipulation.
I just categorically disagree with that. I don't really have anything else to add to it. Unless you would like me to embellish, I just don't think that that is a reasonable assessment of, of that, that case. And I absolutely feel that the planning board has the, the basis of, to deny a... has the, the basis of, to deny specifically, um, where the zoning ordinance calls into consideration the goals and objectives of the master plan in the land use code as approval criteria for site plan.
Okay. All right. Um, other questions for staff by the board, while we're in the hearing?
Could I just speak about the conditions-
Sure.
-while we're still open?
Yep.
So that you, you all got a, a piece of paper, um, about proposed conditions for nineteen and twenty-five, um, so I'll speak about nineteen first. Nineteen, in your packet, um, does talk about a, a fence line monitoring system. This was a recommendation from our, uh, consultant, uh, with Sanborn Head. Uh, this, uh, we, we value our consultant's input, that was your direction, that we seek input from, uh, a, a technical professional in the field, which we did. I am happy, and I do agree with the applicant to an extent, that, uh, some of these details may be a little too fleshed out, uh, in their current iteration, um, and I'd be happy to walk back the language regarding a fence line monitoring system. I think that we can have a conversation with experts on both sides, a representative from DES, to, to fairly establish a system that will be effective, and I'm happy, uh, to, to do that, and I think incorporating a representative from DES's Air Resources Division is, is appropriate. Regarding twenty-five, um, I, I, I do agree again, that, um, some of the details, um, may be premature. Um, I will say again, that these details came from our environmental consultant, um, and that is why they made their way into, uh, our conditions. I will concede that I think it would be fair for us to have a conversation with DES, with the applicant's expert, to make sure that these are appropriate. However, I will, I will not, I would not advise the board to walk back the establishment of a monitoring fund that the applicant funds at their expense. Um, I do not want to walk that back, because if we remove that, we will have to re-argue that point, uh, at a future date, and if we can set that condition now, that will be set in stone, and I think that is a very important, uh, piece, because the applicant has stated their willingness to do monitoring, um, even a willingness to pay for the monitoring. And I, I strongly believe that while some of those details may need to be finalized, and I think that we can flex some of those, um, we need to enshrine the language that a monitoring fund is set up at the applicant's expense.
Okay. Yeah, we're still in the hearing.
We agree.
Okay.
No issue with that.
Good. So, a question, I have a question about that.
Go ahead, Ms. Hudson.
Is the appropriate trigger still then, prior to the certificate of occupancy, or would that be a different point in time that that monitoring fund should be set up?
I think, uh, occupancy is, is acceptable, I would not be opposed to, uh, conditioning a building permit on that, though.
Other questions by the board? Uh, I, go ahead, Mr., Mr. Hirsch.
One, one question I have is, if they, if the, uh, pollutants are found to be in excess of what's, what's permitted, what happens at that point? Is the plant automatically shut down, or is, do we then go into a enforcement situation?
So we, we do have a condition, um, in here, while it's not necessarily speaking to if, if pollutants are found in excess of, of, um, regulations, and, and there is, um, a, a DES permit, if they're in violation of that, they have their own state regulations, um, but we do have a condition in our, um, recommended conditions, that if any of the, the mitigation measures that are being proposed are found ineffective, um, that operation shall be shut down until those mitigation measures are restored to full operation.
So what happens, the city issues an order?
Yes, and, and, and-
Essentially?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then it, what, subject to litigation, I guess, going beyond that?
I, I would say not, but we, I, I believe I'm speaking prematurely, I think that we would just need to figure out what the process is, this would be something that was handled, would be handled through our code enforcement office, um, and, and the process for, for how that would be handled, I'm just not prepared to speak on it at the moment.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions by the board? I guess, I, I have one, I guess, for the applicant, um, so just, logistically speaking here, there's a subdivision plan, there's two site plans. Subdivision plan is precedent, nothing can go forward without the subdivision plan. Um, the two site plans are essentially independent of each other, but in your application, this package is a package. You know, you're, you know, I'm just speaking hypothetically here, I have no idea where the board's going on, or what anything's gonna happen, um, but, do you have a desire to approve a subdivision plan if, or to, to continue with a subdivision application if, say, the site plans are not approved?
Yes, I, it's funny, I was thinking about this, uh, when I wasn't sleeping last night. Um, I believe the board should take up the subdivision, um, and make a decision on the subdivision.
Yeah.
And then take up the, uh, Newport Construction one forty-five Temple, uh, 'cause frankly, it's kind of low-hanging fruit, and then take up the asphalt plant. If, if something, if the site plan, one of the two of the site plans are denied, we don't necessarily have to record a subdivision plan, we, we could ultimately withdraw it if it, if it doesn't work, but I think we're here, I think you make a decision on, on the three applications, and then how it plays out, you know, we will keep you folks informed.
Got it. Okay, I wanted to be sure of that. Okay. All right.
I, I would just make one final point on, on the conditions. We provided conditions of approval, uh, as part of the process, um, you know, we, we have a, a duty to assist the applicant, this is, this is part of that duty. But by no means do, do the fact that we have provided conditions of approval represent, um, that this is a suitable use for the site, or that, um, we feel that the conditions adequately mitigate the concerns that have been raised by the public, uh, and by experts. Um, so I want to make that very clear, um, that the, the conditions are, are just there to help guide the board, uh, in, um, their decision, um, but it is, do not take it as, you know, staff's, uh, recommendation of, of approval, or anything of that sort. Uh, and we, I also did not comment on the, uh, hours request, um, as written, it is seven to six, seven AM to six PM, uh, it's, and the ask is six AM to six PM, um, I will say that staff does not support that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions by the board on any of these three applications? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing on this matter, so. Okay, um, so moving into the meeting here, um, obviously, we've been doing this for a while, um, you know, I, I think there's been a lot of, a lot of input from the, the city, I mean, I, and the applicants, I mean, I appreciate that, I think that's excellent. Um, you know, I know it's, can be frustrating to people watching this board move methodically from meeting to meeting to meeting, but, um, trust me when I say, if we don't do that, we're right back here, very quickly, um, being remanded to do this again. So, you know, my goal as the chairman for this board is, regardless of how long it takes, to get through the process in a matter that, um, is, you know, consistent with our bylaws, consistent with our, our, our land use codes, consistent with our, um, you know, sort of ability to support the final decision and not go backwards in these things. So, um, you know, that's my two cents on that, um, you know, and I know that sometimes takes a long time, but, um, this is not the longest application we've ever had either, not even close, so, um, you know, it, we, we've, we've had some long ones. So, um, so I'm interested for comments here, I mean, logistically speaking, I think we do have to walk through each of these. I would like to take the subdivision plan first, um, 'cause essentially, the other plans don't, they're, they're moved, as far as I'm concerned, right? I mean, logistically speaking, they are, if we don't have the, the subdivision, so I'll start.
Mr. Varley?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, just on the, on the process point, I, I just want to reiterate, you know, what, what you described in terms of, um, you know, understanding people's frustration, you know, this has taken a long time, but I, I would just say that, you know, the reason that all of the members of the public are here and have, had the opportunity to, um, you know, comment on this plan and express their views, is because the, the board, you know, took a slow and deliberate approach here to give everyone the opportunity to have, um, that input and to, you know, request, um, that additional resources be brought to bear, including to evaluate, you know, uh, health and environmental impacts. So, um, you know, in my view, you, the, the board has done, done right by the public here, and in terms of, and by the applicant, for that matter, in terms of, you know, extending this process for the period it has. Uh, you know, one other sort of process-related point is, I, I do agree with the applicant i- in terms of their expression that this, you know, this board is, is not a political body, um, and, you know, for, for the benefit of the public, when we review applications, we don't simply, you know, determine whether the application is, is acceptable or not based on, you know, whether it's, you know, publicly popular or not. Our obligation is to review the criteria of the ordinance and to determine, you know, whether based on those criteria, the application, um, you know, can be approved or not, and with or without conditions. And so, with that in mind, there were just, there were four criterias, I look at the, you know, uh, the basis for the board's evaluation of, of site, and, and to, Mr. Chairman, to your point, um, I'm going to speak really more specifically to the site plan applications, understanding your point that we would ultimately have to approve the subdivision application before we could get to the site plan applications, but I think, you know, really all of the substantive considerations that the, the public has raised, that the applicant has spoken to, you know, relate to the, to the site plan. So, um, as I see it, you know, there are, there are really four criteria that, that come into play here. One is, um, consistency with the master plan, two are the health and environmental impacts, three, traffic, and four, coexistence with surrounding uses. And, you know, there's been an awful lot of testimony on, you know, the health impacts and the environmental impacts, but, you know, from my perspective, I've heard, you know, conflicting testimony. So, we heard from Dr. Green on behalf of the applicant, we heard from San Board Head, who was retained by the city, um, at the board's request, and we heard from Dr. Durant, um, who spoke to, you know, essentially the, the abutters and the public's concerns. And, you know, i- in my view, we've got at best inconclusive, you know, testimony when you put all that together, meaning that we've got, you know, a conflict between, you know, where those experts come out, including, by the way, I would say, that, you know, again, San Board had the expert that the city retained, um, you, you know, did not ultimately conclude that the, you know, environmental or health back, impacts were, you know, so significant, um, that, that they were unacceptable. In terms of the traffic impact, I, I think, you know, the condition speaks to excessive traffic, um, and I think to the applicant's point, that they may not have excessive traffic in terms of the volume of traffic. However, I, I don't think that, you know, a volume alone speaks to the qualitative impact. Um, you know, we've heard testimony from the applicant that essentially, all of the traffic here would be heavy truck, truck traffic, that there, you know, the traffic in and out of the site would be the trucks that are, um, you know, receiving the asphalt product, and then, you know, delivering it out to customers. And, you, in my view, it is relevant to consider that as an impact, separate and apart from, you know, just the, the number of trips that are being generated, um, because it's, you know, it's heavier traffic, there are, you know, it, there are noise and odor issues and, you know, impact on the surrounding roads that are, you know, not captured by, uh, you know, the volumes of traffic. In terms of the coexistence with the surrounding uses, you know, again, one issue there, I think, is, is property values, and, and in my view, we've, we've heard sort of competing or conflicting testimony on those points with, you know, expert testimony from the applicant saying there won't be an adverse impact on property values, and, and, you know, expert testimony from, um, you know, representatives of the public who have said that there will be, you know, in my view, again, I, I think, you know, it, it's hard for the board to conclude affirmatively one way or the other. However, I do think, you know, in terms of both, um, the intensity of the use here, and, you know, the other existing uses, um, I, I think, you know, there's a, there's a real question in my mind whether this plant can coexist with those surrounding uses. Um, so again, I, I think, you know, this proposed use, although there are other, you know, industrial uses, um, in this area currently, they don't have, in my view, the same impact that this use would have in terms of, you know, the traffic considerations, the, the potential odors, the, the potential noise considerations that have been raised by the public. Um, you know, furthermore, I think, i- and this gets to sort of the, the last point I have, which is, you know, consideration with the master plan, which is, you know, sort of a, I think the applicant is speaking to, sort of historically, what the uses have been here, and, and maybe what, you know, that means in, in terms of, um, their view of what is consistent, but I, I think we have to look at the neighborhood as, you know, what is it transitioning to? And, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Durfee, uh, wholeheartedly in terms of, you know, the application of the master plan here. And, again, notwithstanding the fact that, you know, that the City of Nashua has not adopted, you know, additional specific ordinances related to the master plan, we do have an existing ordinance that says specifically that the site plan shall be consistent with the goals, objectives, and strategies adopted as part of the city's master plan. And, you know, I think it's important to keep in mind that, you know, this East Hollis Street corridor was one of, I think, six specific areas that were identified and addressed in the master plan. And you and I were, you know, part of that committee that can sit, you know, considered and discussed that master plan, and, you know, in my view, when the master plan discussed mixed use, it was really talking about mixed use in the sense of uses that would be ancillary or supportive of residential uses. Um, you know, retail, for example, you know, where you would have, uh, you know, a part, an apartment building with, you know, residential uses and then retail uses on the ground floor. And, you know, uh, transportation uses that would support, you know, uh, the residential use and increased residential uses. We also know that, you know, one of the principal goals, or, or a principal goal of the master plan was to provide for additional housing. And, you know, I think that, that aligns as well with the, you know, East Hollis Street corridor segment of the master plan, which is really focused, I think, on a transition to greater residential use and, and frankly, away from an industrial use. So, when I look at the, the provisions of the master plan and consider the tie in the specific ordinance, in my view, this, this project simply is not consistent with the goals of the master plan, you know, as it envisions what the East Hollis Street corridor is to look like. Um, and, you know, I think to the extent that the applicant were to suggest that, you know, we, we cannot consider, you know, um, that goal of the master plan, I, I think that's inconsistent with the express language in our ordinance. So, I, I guess, where I come out in this is, I, I think there are several bases, a- as I've described, in terms of the master plan, the traffic, and coexisting, coexistence with surrounding uses, that in my view, do not support approval of the site plans. And so, I, I'm, I'm happy to, to obviously consider the, the subdivision plan separately from that, but that would be my view, uh, on the site plan, and, and then I would look forward to hearing the views of other board members.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Varley. Waldemar Tivo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I think Mr. Varley had some great, great points. Um, you know, the one thing I wanted to say before, um, I went over my, my quick points is, um, you know, I was, I was slightly disappointed that if, you know, the client, or I should say, the attorneys of the client, um, believed that the law is on their side, that they wouldn't have kind of taken digs at the constituents and the people in the city that were just trying to come and speak from their heart, because they're not coming at it from a law side, they're coming at it to say their neighborhood. So I was a little disappointed in that. Um, but when I look at these points, the master plan is one of my biggest things, when I'm thinking about whether I should support this or not. Um, it, it doesn't fit, maybe the master plan of a hundred years ago, I mean, fifty years ago, we had a tannery, we would never- of 100 years ago, I mean, 50 years ago, we had a tannery. We would never put a tannery back in the city. And I think we want to go to a different type of Nashville based on that master plan. And I think we've changed. We're no longer a mill town. We're completely different. And I think the, the surrounding areas, I don't think the, the applicant's taken that into account. We've talked about people, you know, and I think a couple of people spoke today about the types of people that live in that neighborhood, and they haven't really gone out to them. And I think that's important, and I'm speaking about the people that don't speak English. I think that's, that's a critical piece of coexisting with the neighborhoods that you were in. And I, I just don't think that, that's been done. You know, traffic, you know, every, it seems like every traffic study I see never comes up with anything significant, but, you know, to Mr. Varley's point, excessive traffic doesn't mean, as Attorney Proman said, a million trucks, because no one said a million trucks, right? We said 250 to 350, something like that. It's excessive for the size of the trucks on those roads. It's not excessive for a million trucks, but to me, it's excessive to what's being put on that pavement. Maybe it's a way for them to, you know, then they have to go out and put the asphalt down on the road that's been destroyed. But I don't believe that the traffic study tells me the story that it needs to tell. I, I, you know, again, conflicting reports on all this stuff, whether it's the pollution, whether it's the traffic study, one side will say one thing, one side will say the other, which one do you believe? In my eyes, when I see lots of trucks going down the road is that, and we add 200 trucks to it, it's a lot of trucks going on those roads. You know, just in the last 10 years, we've seen how many vans now go down our streets because of the whole, you know, by, by online, you know, phenomena that's occurred, I guess. And this is just going to add to, trucks after trucks and big trucks. So, you know, at the end of the day, and the points by our planning department and the points by Mr. Varley, I, I feel similar to, to what Mr. Varley's saying, that I don't think I could support this either.
Any other comments by the board here or discussion? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll speak a little bit about traffic. I know, Mr. Husband made the statement about capacity, and that was purely about a roadway capacity, you know, can that many vehicles get through. But in the same documents, we also did reference the issue that it's not the amount of traffic, it's the type of traffic and that, you know, there's different types of impacts there with, you know, air emissions and noise and those sorts of things, slow-moving vehicles. So that was, I just want to make that point because, because, you know, there's been, they've seized a lot on that one statement about the capacity. The East Hollis Street corridor study, they referenced where it talks about, you know, industrial uses and that sort of thing, and it does, but it also talks about other things. It talks about potentially raising the grade of commercial street to reconnect the neighborhoods, you know, which, you know, it may be a bit difficult obviously right now, but it talks about, you know, additional, additional residential development in various areas and whatever. So, again, I think they've kind of pulled out the one thing that, that lent towards their argument without, without, you know, looking at it in totality. I, I think Mr. Varley's comments were, were well stated. To me, it's the totality of things. We have to look at these four categories, but in each category, you know, I think there's a, a record here that would indicate that there is a concern at some, some level, you know. Maybe it's, maybe it's moderate noise impact, maybe it's moderate traffic impact, maybe it's moderate health impact, and so on and so forth. But to me, you know, the totality of all that is, is concerning. So, you can, you know, you pick out each one and look at it individually, but when you look at it as a whole project, those things, in my mind, kind of add up. And so, I, I do have concerns.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Hirsch?
I agree with Mr. Varley. His, his points are well taken. Opposed to the project? I think there are too many problems.
Anybody else? Comments? Okay. All right. I'd like to sort of move this along. I want to talk about the subdivision specifically here. So the subdivision is a, you know, essentially just a division into a couple of lots here. You know, I'm looking for comments regarding the subdivisions. Does anybody have any issues with the subdivision? See any problems with that? Go ahead, Mr. Varley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I guess from my perspective, I would not, I would not necessarily be opposed to approving the subdivision independently, you know, given the testimony we heard from the applicant, that they would, you know, still like to us to consider that as an independent application, understanding that, you know, that that could be, you know, combined with, you know, potentially, depending on the board's views of it, you know, a denial of the site plan application. So, you know, and in particular, I don't think, sort of standing independent of the, the site plan, I, I would have the same concerns or, or view there as being the same, you know, bases for, you know, again, denying the, the subdivision application as, you know, on a stand-alone basis. So, I, I think, I think we do, as a matter of, you know, the, the board's responsibility here, have to consider the subdivision plan separately. And so, again, as I said, I, I wouldn't, I don't think I would have a, a sort of an opposition to the subdivision plan on that, on that independent basis.
Other thoughts? Okay. All right. Well, let's take the subdivision. Anybody want to make a motion on the subdivision? Kind of hinges on the rest of the discussion. Mr. Hudson?
Before, before motions made, I'd just like clarification on the conditions, because there's a three and a four. One of them references a letter from Joe Mandola, and four references an email from Wayne Husband. I believe, in fact, Joe Mandola and Wayne Husband co-signed the same letter. So I, I, I would suggest that the letter reference both of them as signatories and four be stricken unless I'm, unless I'm confused and there was an email from Mr. Husband of the same day.
Staff, can you clarify on that?
That's fine.
Yeah? Okay. Any other discussion on the subdivision? All right. Anybody want to make a motion on the subdivision? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, with, you know, the, the background that I've already provided in terms of sort of the independent consideration of the subdivision plan, a separate part from the site plans, and, you know, with the understanding that there are, you know, different criteria for the subdivision plan as opposed to the site plan, I would make a motion to approve new business project A 22-0299 subdivision plan. You know, finding that the, the subdivision plan does meet the requirements outlined in NRO, section 190-138G and section 190-23F, and that would be made with a total of six stipulations. The, the first stipulation being a waiver request from section 190-282B9 with respect to physical features shown within 1,000 feet, and that would read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, reading as written in the staff report. Stipulations three and four being amended so that they are combined to read prior to the chair signing the plan. All comments in, in a letter from Joe Mandola, senior staff engineer, and Wayne Husband, P E, dated June 7, 2023, shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the Division of Public Works. And then renumbered stipulations four, five, and six, reading as written in the staff report.
Okay. So we have that motion to approve this case A 22-0299 subdivision plan with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Varley. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. So the second order of business here is really, you know, there's, there's two, two site plans. The first one is case number A 21-0300, and this is specific to the site plan to show the new office, storage, and repair garage located at 145 Temple Street. So, you know, obviously, this is, this is not the asphalt plant. This is, this is a, a, an office, storage, and repair facility on theoretically this newly created subdivision that we've, you know, potentially, or have approved here. So I'm, I'm interested in people's thoughts on that. I mean, I've, I've gone back over a lot of the notes. I don't remember one objection to this particular facility.
Could I just ask a question of staff?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that, that like the subdivision, you know, where our approval does not obligate the applicant to record the subdivision, similarly, if we were to approve this site plan that's limited to the office and does not involve the asphalt plant, that does not compel the applicant to then construct the office, right? They, they don't have to act on the approved site plan.
That's correct.
With that clarification, again, I would view it as, I agree with you, Mr. Chair. I don't think any of the objections we've heard from anyone, any of the considerations, any of the testimony, the, you know, the materials that have been submitted have related to, you know, the construction of, of a, you know, the office space, that component of the application. So again, I would view that as, you know, considering that application independently and based on the site plan approval criteria, I would not be opposed to approving that limited site plan that relates only to the office space.
Yeah, and I would, I would probably go further that, you know, office space, storage, repair, that's pretty consistent with the mixed use that we talked about. And again, it, it doesn't, you know, it's, it's pretty consistent. It doesn't bring the traffic load and the other components that we've, we've been talking about. So, I would agree with that. Anybody else have any feelings either way? Mr. Hirsch?
A question about the access from Temple Street. That would be through the, the other site. Is that correct? Which we may, may or may not approve. How does that work? They'll be just able to use that as access? Would we know access for the site directly on Temple Street? Is that the way it's set up? Or am I misreading it?
Staff?
We have a condition on all of these plans, that there would be agreements to convey easements. Right now, the, the applicant is the owner of record of all three lots. They don't need to grant a cross-access easement to themselves. If they were to sell the lot and the subdivision was to occur, and they would then be crossing over someone else's lot, those easements would be recorded prior to the sale. That's why we have the agreement to convey those easements.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, that's stipulation number eight in the, in this particular staff report, anyway. Other thoughts? Mr. Hudson?
Just a question for staff. The project description speaks to 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM hours, Monday through Saturday, but it's not a condition of approval. So I don't know if that refers more to the asphalt plant. I was just curious if the current operation is under any current hours limitations or not.
No.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding A 21-0300, office, storage, repair garage? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, as, bearing in mind the discussion we've just had, as to new business project A 21-0300 site plan, I would make a motion to approve, finding that the site plan does meet the requirements outlined in NRO, section 190-146D, 190-23F, and 190-280. And that would be with a total of eight stipulations. The first of those stipulations is a waiver request from section 190-279EE, requiring the showing of existing conditions on and off-site, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations two through eight will read as written in the staff report.
All right. All right. So we have that motion by Mr. Varley with those stipulations. Do we have a second?
Oh, second, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Second by Mr. Ballinger. Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I, I would like to amend Mr. Varley's motion to, to clarify, similar to the previous approval, that staff recommendation three and four, or, excuse me, two and three be combined to reflect a, a letter from Joe Mandola and Wayne Husband dated June 7, 2023. And then stipulations four through eight remain, or, I guess, three through seven then, as would remain as written in the staff report.
And yes, I would, I would, in light of that, I would amend my original motion consistent with, with, with Mr. Ballinger just described in terms of the conditions.
All right. Would you maintain the second with that?
Absolutely. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this particular item? Again, A 21-0300. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then that motion passes. Okay. And then to case A 21-0301, this is the 145 Temple Street site point for the asphalt manufacturing facility. So, any more comments or entertain motions on that at this point? So, okay. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Varley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As to new business project A 21-0301 site plan, I would make a motion to deny this application with the finding that the site plan does not meet the requirements outlined in section 190-146D, 190-23F, and 190-280. And more specifically, that the application fails to satisfy those criteria in the following respects. Number one, that the application is not consistent with the goals and objectives of the master plan adopted by the city, you know, considering the specific provisions in the master plan with respect to the East Hollis Street corridor where this, where this site plan would be located, and the inconsistency of this plan with the, the proposed or contemplated uses and objectives of the master plan as it relates to this area. And noting in particular that one of, you know, that the, although the city of Nashville has not adopted ordinances specifically with respect to the master plan, that the, the city has adopted an ordinance, as I mentioned, that indicates that one of the criteria for approval of a site plan is that it be consistent with the goals, objectives, and strategies adopted in that master plan. Second, that the, the project would generate excessive traffic. And again, specifically that the, that this excessive traffic would be of a qualitative nature rather than a quantitative nature, given considerations of the fact that the, the traffic would consist almost exclusively of heavy truck traffic that would generate, you know, excessive noise, odors, and impact on the surrounding area and the surrounding roads. And finally, that the, the site plan as proposed cannot coexist with the surrounding uses, and taking into account the intensity of the use here, in particular, that it is of a greater impact and more significant than any of the existing uses and a greater impact and more significant than any of the existing uses, including any of the existing industrial uses. Again, taking into consideration the impacts of the truck traffic, concerns about odors that would be emitted from the plant, concerns about other noise with respect to the operation of the plant. And again, that the site plan would be inconsistent with the existing uses, meaning the surrounding residential uses, and, you know, being more intense and not similar in nature to the other industrial uses, but also inconsistent with the transitioning nature of the neighborhood towards residential and mixed use, meaning mixed use that is ancillary or supportive of those residential uses. So, with those factors in mind, I would, again, make the motion to deny the application.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley to deny this application based on the three site plan approval criteria stated for the reasons stated. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? The motion to deny passes. Okay. Going to be moving on with our agenda. We really have only, well, we have a couple more things. Next up, we have our review of the tentative agenda, sort of proposals of regional impact. So, from the board, does anybody have a chance to take a look at the tentative agenda? Want to make a motion on that?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact after, as proposed at the technical review meeting conducted on June 12, 2023.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger, that there are no proposals of regional impact. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. All right, we have a couple discussion items. I'm going to hang on a minute until the room is a little bit quieter here. I'll give it a minute, so... I'll just wait a second until it clears out. Matt, if you could close that on the way out? That'd be good, yeah? So... Okay, so, discussion items. Sam, you had a couple of things you wanted to kind of go on.
Yes, I would like just to announce that while we are very happy for our fantastic and very helpful Chris Weber, she will be retiring effective tomorrow.
Oh!
So, what a hearing to go out on.
Yeah.
So, as such, she's been instrumental for 26 years in assisting this board, and one of the key things, and basically why I'm particularly bringing this up, is she is responsible for curating the packets that you receive for every meeting, so we will not have that assistance in doing so. That is quite the labor, I will tell you, especially when we have complex projects with lots of documents, with lots of new submissions, and it can be quite challenging to keep everything in order. So, given we will be losing her, it's going to be extremely difficult for us to curate the packets in the same way until we can fill the position, which we're going to look at internally, and I think that this, in the interim, we have to shift how we are providing packets to the board. So, in the interim, what we hope to do is basically go digital. So, we will be uploading all documents onto our website, but basically the backend and how we organize documents, and basically, you will be emailed a copy of the agenda, and under each title, there will be clickable links to the staff report, to all the plans, and then any supplemental materials, say, environmental studies. So, you will be able to just, you know, open up the agenda in your email, and you can then be directed via those links to all the documents, and those will be housed on the website. Now, I recognize that many of you have been utilizing paper copies for all of these years, and we do not necessarily are asking you to bring electronic devices to look at plans. I have been in conversations with IT to see if we can procure tablets of some kind to aid in the viewing of these plans during meetings. However, recognizing that that can take some time, there's some funding involved, we will do our best at, you know, board members' request to produce these paper packets, you know? I think that going digital, just by nature, you'll be able to access more of the application materials. We do have to trim down what we provide you with. You know, you can look at a 250-page traffic study if you so choose, because it will be digital, it'll be accessible. You can look at, you know, 25, 40-page plan sets, so as you so choose. However, we will do our best to provide the paper copies, but just please recognize that we're going to be constrained. So, we will try to honor those requests if you make them, but otherwise, everything will be available digital, and this will be effective for our next meeting.
Great.
May I say? Quick follow-up. Mr. Chair, thank you. Sam, will those continue to be, I guess, scans of documents?
No, they will not.
Or will these be the original PDFs that the applicants submit? Okay.
These will be the originals that we receive, so you will be able to read in detail the plans, you will be able to zoom in, they will be of high quality.
Then I respectfully relinquish my paper copy that I've been requesting for several years. So, thank you very much for that update. It's very helpful, though.
Yeah, and Chris, on behalf of the board, I thank you for all your help that you've given us all these years. It's been awesome, you know? Really, we're going to miss you for sure, so...
Yes, and congratulations.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion items at this point? No? Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hirsch?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, so we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Hirsch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, we are adjourned at 10:18. Thank you.